Okay, it's a city council meeting, December, it's December the 19th, so we'll go ahead with our meeting with the call to order, the rule call.
Mayor?
Here.
Councilwoman Paul Pendergast?
Here.
Consular Jim Phillips?
Here.
Consular Jim Richards?
Here.
Consular Carl Kraus?
Here.
So the next item is our approval of the agenda, and I'd like to add three quick things. There is a resolution that was added, the very lady was, again, item B I I or A B adding Resolution 2023-35, which I think was playing on your desk when you came in.
This is it. So where are you at?
Under new business, after the resolution of.
Okay, I would also like to add, under B, under new business fiduciary discussion, fiduciary responsibilities.
One more time?
I would like to add, under B of new business, the discussion.
And B C.
B C, on the under C of new business, the discussion fiduciary responsibilities.
Also, under personnel M number four, office hours for 1229, that's a Friday. We want to have the office open on that Friday. And the last item is under unfinished business number A, approved waste management garbage contract. That was approved to negotiate at the November meeting, and we have signed the contract with Waste Management, so we can remove that from our agenda.
I think that should stay on there. I think we need to talk about that. But I'd like to keep it on there.
It was approved in November.
It was, but I'd like to talk about it, based on the email that came in. I do think it's worth conversation with the council.
We signed the contract with Waste Management, and it's been sent to them.
Does it not matter?
We can still discuss it, can't we?
We can discuss that it's been signed, but I don't know what else you're going to discuss. The motion in November was that the meeting was to negotiate a contract. We talked to them, they sent us a contract, and we signed it. So we can leave it on there, but that's where the current status is, so.
I think leave it on as a discussion, let's have it.
Okay, we can leave it on. Any other changes?
Yeah, I'd like to make, in between K and L, one on the property, an update on the property up on Third Street Southwest.
Street or Third Avenue?
Street, eh?
Be Street, yeah.
Street.
What was that?
Up by the Presbyterian Church.
No, I'm sorry, what part of the agenda?
Between K and L.
Can we make it unfinished business?
Yeah.
For an update?
So B?
Yeah, B. Anything else? So is there, is your motion to accept the agenda as amended with these various options?
I make a motion to accept the agenda with the changes.
I'll second it. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll favor it, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
So this evening, we also have a presentation for a standing citizen award for 2023, and I think Beau is here? Yeah, Beau, two-step podium.
Morning.
Evening. We'll just get double due on.
Council, my name is Beau Hannenberg, along with Mayor Iacquist, Skylar Breitenstein, and I formerly, on City Council for many years, continue to serve on Orinoco's Outstanding Citizen Committee. Regretfully, Skylar was not able to make it tonight, but he is joining by Zoom. He expressed his gratitude to council for continuing to recognize the importance of this award, and also sends his congratulations to this year's outstanding citizen of 2023. Many years ago, when we served on City Council, Orinoco tragically lost longtime businessman Gordy Carable. Gordy, like many others, believed in giving back to the community. When Skylar came up with the idea for this award to honor Gordy, with help from Gordy's nephew Mac and the support of Gordy's wife, Yvonne, and the support of City Council, he saw a need to recognize so many people who give back to the city of Orinoco, our hidden gem of a community in southeast Minnesota. Without these types of volunteers, our small town would not survive, let alone thrive. The award hangs to you just on your right as you enter into the community center. Current and past residents can be nominated annually, as long as they have volunteered and they resided and volunteered within the city of Orinoco. The next nomination window will fall, will be in the fall of 2024. This year's recipient began volunteering in Orinoco many, many years ago, helping on Gold Rush weekends and serving on the Planning and Zoning Committee, eventually serving on P and Z for over 10 years. In the middle of his time on P and Z, when there was a need, he stepped up, served on City Council for two years. Seeing a need for more community outreach, in 2013, along with several others, he became one of the founding charter members of the Orinoco Lions Club. Still active today with the Lions Club, on this 10th anniversary year, he serves quietly but proudly. Since he's not one who needs to be in the limelight, he enjoys doing what needs to be done, and is always willing to help. He honestly didn't know that he would be here tonight, accepting this award. Rumor is, he's fired up about the old tax increases, so we wanted him to attend tonight's City Council meeting. So without further ado, on behalf of the city of Orinoco, I'd like to present this year's Orinoco's Outstanding Citizen for 2023, Mr. Doug Gillard. Get a picture, and Orinoco has a, or Orinoco, Ryland as a certificate.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm speechless. I don't, I don't know what to say. Thank you. Fully speechless. Obviously, they all knew about it. Thank you, thank you.
We're gonna get a certificate? Bring it stand for the podium. Let's turn it around so we can all see it, and then trade it in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You're welcome. Thank you, as well as that. All right. So we'll start our first public hearing tonight, this is regards to delinquent water bills. So for those that would like to address council regarding any of the delinquent water bills, please step to podium, fill out a white card, and share it with, share it with us. Second call for public hearing for delinquent water bills. Please step up to the podium. And third and final call for delinquent water bills. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:40. So we have a Resolution 2023-29, which is in your packet, listing the parcels and the amounts. With that, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2023-29.
Right, second.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll do a voice vote.
Mayor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Right.
Consular Pendergast?
I'll state, I wasn't familiar with this.
Consular Richards?
Aye.
And Consular Kraus?
Aye.
It's approved. Next is our public hearing for proof and taxation. So with that, I'd just like to make a few comments, at the beginning of the public hearing, just kind of bring everybody up to speed with where we're at. So, as you may have noticed in our tax statements, and information that's been sent out, our primary budget that was adopted in, end of September, was 1.5, 1,506,282 dollars. And it's from our 2022 or 2023 budget is 1,075,534, which is a 40% increase. So that's a very alarming figure, and since that time, end of September, early October, we have continued to work on that figure. And so what we've done, and what we'd be sharing and proposing at the end, at the start of our discussion here after the public hearing, is that that figure has been reduced to 1,357,005 dollars, which is a 26% increase. So it's still a sizable increase, but at the same time, there's things that are happening within our city that warrant some additional cost, and there's, we'll get into more details, but I just wanted to share with you that that has been reduced now to 26%. Yeah. The rate is, previous rate a year ago was .374, the tax rate, and now the tax rate that was proposed here, the 1.3 is 0.435, which is still a low tax rate compared to other cities in the county. So with that, let's proceed with our public hearing. So those that would like to speak to that, please step to the podium, sign a card, or sign a sheet. I see Roger Wells would like to speak. Roger?
Thank you, Mayor. You're right, the 40% got my attention, which is probably reason I'm here. My 6% still is stiff. On the back of that sheet that had the 40%, I noticed that City of Byron is going to go down in their taxes by 2.4%. Dover's going down by 5%, Pine Line is going down by 5%, Rochester's only going up by less than 4%, and there's four other communities that are only increasing by 2%. So I'm interested in what 26% buys us. It's always easier for me to understand if I put it into personal terms for me, so I look back the last three years plus the projection year coming up. Four years ago, my taxes went up 1% for $26. The next year, they went up by 1%, $65. This current year, they went up by 19%, that was a stiff increase, that's up to $300 now. And then the 40% got my attention, because that was going to take me up to, I don't know, $674. So I realize it costs money to run a government. I see other governments in other cities doing it for less money than they did last year. And frankly, it's interesting how I benefit from that. I've been paying taxes 42%. City seems pretty much the same as when I moved here. We had our own constable on a contract, now I think we have sheriff's office. I'm still living off a water well and septic tank, because I got carved out of the planning for utilities. I've seen a lot of housing move in over that 42 years, especially the last 20 years, that's a good tax base. I would say if they're moving to town, that's tax base. So you guys were collecting more money from more people, and yet, the city wants to spend, now you say 26% more over last year. I'm just interested in finding out what you're spending it for, because I don't see any change myself from what I was spending four years ago, three years ago, and certainly this year. As far as I'm concerned, the city has remained lapped in terms of what I get out of it. Thank you.
Doug Gillard, Kristofferson?
Good evening. Taxes also caught my eye, and I understand it's late in the process, but even as recently as a week ago, most of this body was in this room making changes to that budget. So I can appreciate that Orinoco's proposed tax levy rate seems low at less than 50% of tax capacity, but please don't use cities that have 100% levy rates as a benchmark. Instead, why not compare us to other cities that provide more services, things like public schools, libraries, local police, and they do it with tax rates of perhaps 75%? Any discussion of tax rate is incomplete if you don't discuss the services that are or not, are or are not included in that tax rate. When you view this levy and this budget with this tax rate, you'll start to see that, in my mind, the city of Orinoco is falling short. You know, it's probably too late, but in my mind, again, the right thing to do is to go back to the drawing board and start with a reasonable and modest budget increase, and then look at the proposed budgets for each department, and start to make the hard choices. Maybe you have to shift some money between parks and public safety, maybe you don't, but you need to have that discussion, and need to work within an established budget. If you go forward and approve this levy, it really should be the last tax rate increase until the city changes the budgeting process. I watched the last workshop, three and a half hours. It was, it was painful, but it was very eye-opening. In my opinion, the council should be providing guidance on spending priorities and tax levy targets, not going line by line through the budget to decide what stays and what goes. That task really should be left to city staff, with the expectation that once you give them boundaries, they will prioritize within those and make their budgets work. As a taxpayer and a resident, that's what I expect from elected officials and paid staff, and I don't think that's an unreasonable request. Thank you.
Martin, please. Martin, do you want to speak during the public hearing, or during public forum? Public forum? We're not, we're not to that point yet, so. Is Doug Gillard? Did you come back in?
He ended up leaving.
Did he?
White wouldn't understand. He was overwhelmed. He was only here for one reason, that he knew of, anyway.
Second call for public hearing regarding the taxes.
I'll give this ahead of time.
That's all right. Are there any other ones I need to pick up?
First of all, I want to just thank the council. I know from experience, the time commitment, and how hard it is to make decisions. I have concerns with the 40% increase, and I want to thank you for bringing it down to 26%. I watched the Zoom meeting as well, two times, to try to catch everything you talked about, line by line. I had concerns where you had just a blanket 20% increase on a line item, but yet, in 2023, you had not even spent what you had budgeted for 2023. So that's part of my concern, is just doing the blanket 20%. I understand that we, as a city, have had historical low tax rates, and I appreciate that. My concern is, in 2024, 2023, we're experiencing still high inflation rates, and now you have residents looking at water and sewer bills that they've not had to have in years past. While I understand you should bring it up, I think even 20, 26% is a high increase. And I would like to see you at least look, at least, to bring it down to 20%. If not more, would be fantastic. I think everybody in the room would be happy with that, but I think a 26% increase is just too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Second call for public hearing?
That was the second call, wasn't it?
Yeah, I just did. Third call for public hearing? And third and final call for public hearing regarding the budget levy, truth and taxation. Seeing none, we'll close it at 6:54. Right, with that? Welcome to council for discussions. Some of the questions that were asked, I can share some background of that increase. So there's basically four main areas where these increases were substantial. The first was the fire department, first responders. And there's, throughout this year, they gradually increased the attendance or volunteers for the fire department and first responders. The fire department is 23, is our staff now, and first responders is 25. So there's been a very active recruiting and retention process, too. So a lot of those costs in the fire department were for pagers and radios. The pagers that we have now are old, they're not replaceable, they don't, they can't be fixed, so there's some new pagers and some radios that they're buying, they're very expensive this year, they're buying four of each, and that'd be over a period of three or four years, those pagers and radios will be purchased. A lot more training for the new people, also equipment. One of the bigger items is the air packs, they're having to replace all the air packs on the, what they have for their staff, so that's a big portion of the increases that we see in the fire. The P and Z had increased expenses mainly because of our building codes, the 150, 151 building codes are very, I don't say antiquated, but there's a lot of conflicts within that code that contradict each other, and that's caused a lot of problems with working with our developers and questions that come in about one part says, the other part says, but it's all the same number. So P and Z, with council approval, has hired a company to come and rewrite the building codes, the 150, 151, and that's a 12-month project. The salaries, salaries is always a big part of our budget, but with our growth and our workload that we're seeing by staff right now, which is one person, but we're also in the process of hiring a new city administrator, and hopefully that'll be happening in late February, March timeframe. But we're also looking at a public works person for, to help out with public works, or sewer and water, the sewer plant, all the lift stations will be coming online in March. At the same time, we have over 120 new water hookups that will require work, working with our building inspectors, but our public works people will also have, so we're looking at a fourth person. We're also looking at a full-time administrative assistant or an accountant with all of our loans and all of the 500 utility bills, sewer bills, that can be part of our water billing, that's going to take on another aspect of our utility billing, that's going to require manpower to take care of that. Well, there's a lot of increases in our salary, but it's, the workload now is increasing, and also with our potential growth with the building permits, that's going to require extra time as well. The last item was our community center. What are these employees coming on board? Right now, there, we have a couple in our, we'll have a couple in our office, one upstairs and one downstairs in the Gold Rush room, so there's additional furniture. More importantly, it's accounting software, we're using accounting software that's 30 years old, and it's very cumbersome to work with, it's not very user-friendly, because we've been working with it so long, but there's a lot better software out there that can make our workload a lot easier for our staff. So that's a highlight of where the salary increases are being spent on, people were asking about that, so. So the question that came up during the public hearing was the increase, you know, what's your, what's the bang for the buck? And a lot of that resolved around the fire department, and being able to upgrade, also to help with our ISO rating, which is a kind of a fire standard, goes along with your water supply, too, but it's all part of the training that we get to, that's being required of our staff, and also, we have some great training facilities in Rochester. There's very little cost associated with that, but that's, it helps with our training, keeping our training costs down. So with that, that's, that's my comments. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I feel, you know, I'm listening to the crowd out here, the taxes keep going up, and you know, I've said at some of these meetings, oh, there's this much money left in the budget, well, you don't have to spend that money all the time, keep it for next year, so we don't have to continue it. And we got big bills coming, like they said, water bill's coming, sewer bill's coming. I mean, there's a lot of people on fixed incomes, they ain't wealthy people, you know? I mean, not everybody's wealthy in this town. And I mean, I'm hearing the crowd out here.
Thanks, girl. That's my comment. Comments?
I agree, I agree with what you're saying, Carl. And in terms of the fire department, and those who listened to it online, I think heard what we did. And in terms of the fire department and those who listen to it online, I think heard what we did. The reason that's doubled is that can's been kicked down the road over a number of years. And if you keep kicking the can, at some point you have to, you're going to have to pay for it. And we're going to vet that with the fire department.
We got some pretty good equipment, if you look at under down entire society. I mean, I don't disagree with keeping stuff up, but we got some awful good equipment sitting over there in that building.
We do, we do.
You know, I mean, we don't have to be, we don't have to be put out, we don't have to be, right, just, you know.
Right.
Our equipment ain't outdated, you know?
Well, some of it is outdated and, and you've got years that you can put into service and then it's, it's out of service by state law. And that's where we're at with the equipment. Um, so you, you run into a situation where it just kind of catches you. And again, we were trying to watch what there was, I think, for, for taxes last year and how we were looking at it and trying to make a little bit of an increase. But, um, you know, if, if we turn around and cut back this year, so what are you going to be next year when you've got an eighty percent increase that there is, where it's better to step it up and look at what we need to have for the city? So it's, it's, all of us are in that boat that it's not easy to do. But if we want to keep up with what we need to have, we've, we've got to spend money.
So, um, Joey brought up a good point, the twenty percent. And to get to twenty percent, that's about sixty-seven thousand dollars that we have taken out of the budget. If you guys are interested in looking at that, we can do that. We can look at the higher, higher uses that we have and, and make those cuts. But that's, that's what it would take to get to a twenty percent increase.
I have a couple of questions on that, Riley, if you want to go that avenue. The lines one ninety-five, one ninety-seven in the fire department's budget. There are two reimbursable items that equal thirty-nine thousand dollars. I would like to use that thirty-nine thousand dollars to offset something else in the budget that could be waited until later in the year to purchase. Those lines numbers were one ninety-five and one ninety-seven.
Those are reimbursable, right?
They're both reimbursable. I would like to use those to offset lines two sixteen and two seventeen. So wildland gear and, I just pick it on, I just pick it on because they're closest, closest in, uh, size. They, they equal forty thousand dollars for the monies. And then we just changed the budget through one of them for a thousand dollars. So unless, unless that, unless those reimbursable funds are already targeted for something else.
Well, they are. If you go to line four thirty-four. Line four thirty-four is reimbursed, reimbursement turnout gear. So that's going to take us back out of the budget. What, the enter-out? Four thirty-four? Four forty, four thirty-four.
So that is going to be targeted for what?
That's the thirty-nine thousand with the training, the twenty-seven thousand for turnout gear and the twelve thousand. We buy it, but then we get, we get reimbursed for it, so it's an in and out.
Right, it's a, we're going to get reimbursed for it, but where's the funds going?
Back to pay for it. We pay for it initially, then they reimburse us for it. So it's a zero.
Right, but, but, but if.
First gets out, then it's in.
I understand, I understand. Basically, it's a zero.
Right, right. So it's thirty-nine thousand is what's on that for, for thirty-four, which is, you know, adding those two together, the twenty-seven and the twelve.
Oh, another question. Two thousand dollars for auditing services at the fire department. What's, uh, what's new that we cost two thousand dollars for an audit at the fire department? That we didn't, that we weren't paying for before.
That's a state regulation, I believe, for the fire department.
Want to pay two thousand dollars for it?
The fire, the fire relief has to have an auditor of their audit, so that's what it's used for. They must have been using some miscellaneous expense before because they've had audits before. It's just that here they want to track it.
Okay.
So, um, if we were to look at. So just on line two seventeen. That's where the air packs, twenty new, um, air pack. So in the comments, Homsett County is putting in for an AFG grant of the Eastern State, uh, for the entire county. All of the Scott forty-five minute tax, well, I've been, we've asked for a new compressor. Ours is fifteen years old and lifting along, all of our aspects at the end of twenty-four will be fifteen years old and no longer NFPA compliant, compliant. For the grant, we are responsible for ten percent of the overall cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, saving the city two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's, that's part of the air pack cost, expenses for doing that. So it's, the air packs are old and we're taking advantage of being part of an overall county grant that we have to pay the twenty-five thousand dollars to get twenty new air packs. We talked about the, the pagers. The pagers are a thousand dollars each. For four of those, the radios are thirty-five hundred dollars each. We need eight new pagers shared with ORF as we do not have enough for all of our crews. One of us in zero, all of our, all but two of the radios are fifteen years old. We can't find batteries for them, have been piercing them, piecing them together from spare parts. We begin to order new radios, replacing all would be eighty thousand. They plan to replace eight this year and share those with the first responders.
I would like to change that number from twenty-five thousand down to what we're authorizing in our, in, in that later resolution tonight. That's, that resolution to pay for that ten percent is for twenty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. I don't know, we have another, some couple of cents. Well, you have resolution twenty, oh, okay, twenty, twenty-three, thirty-three. That we're authorizing the money of twenty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety cents to cover that ten percent. Then we want to drop that twenty-five thousand down to that number. Two grand, it's two grand.
Twenty-two, yeah, five forty, or forty-nine, yeah.
Another one, no, we move along here. Line one thirty-six. There's new liability insurance. Alongside our preliminary, it says twenty twenty-three actual plus twenty percent. Your actual shows we showed that spent twenty-four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents on it. But it's showing our preliminary at five thousand seventy-eight dollars. So that should be reduced to nothing less than, nothing, nothing more than three thousand to start with. What line was that? The line one thirty-six.
Now, is that paid, Renee? Is that paid on a monthly basis? Do you know?
No, I believe the line charges once a year.
Once a year.
Those are good figures for LMC, right?
Yeah. Once or twice? I don't remember. I definitely, no.
Let's see, for, and, go to line one twenty-four. There's employee health benefits, twenty percent of salaries and wages, but it shows the actual is paid twenty-nine, sixty-nine, and we're budgeting eighty-nine hundred.
Right, so what's happening with all of our salaries? Salaries are being spread across. This is something the previous administrator was working on, was to identify the salaries are split between finance, financial administration, P and Z, parks, um, water and sewer, all the different categories related to the fight. So that's why salaries are increasing some, some we combined, so I would.
Okay.
That was, that was a spreadsheet that was in your packet.
In line one thirty-nine. Showed last year, our actual for umbrella insurance is fourteen nineteen. So you wanted to go with that and twenty percent, but for some reason we've almost doubled it at twenty-nine hundred.
And again, those are, I'm guessing without looking at that detail, those were quotes that we got from LMC.
The twenty-nine hundred is? Doesn't say that because we're all, alongside our budget, it says twenty, twenty-three actual plus twenty percent.
Yeah.
And it's actually, it's a hundred percent. A hundred, it's over a hundred percent.
Yeah.
So I don't think another one we could even look at. Because there's a big spread, it's line one, one fifty-six. Our actual for legal fees is just over fifteen thousand. The budget was twenty-five and then, you know, for the year now, uh, we're setting that at over twenty-seven.
Cut that down to about eighteen?
Cut that just a little bit. I mean, every little bit would help if we're, you know, if we cut a little from multiple areas.
We think we should cut that, too, Jim?
I think this, what's been happening the last two months with, uh, legal fees have been substantial. Well, these are, these through the end of October that you're comparing them to. So what happened in October, November is going to be in several legal services, too. So I wouldn't cut it short there.
Are the, are these fees beyond Mike's fees?
These are his fees.
Pardon me?
I believe that's correct.
These are, okay.
Yeah, we have other lawyers that work, but.
Right, right.
Line one fifty, one fifty-six.
Never forget, these are just up through October.
That's why I was not in about insurance. If you get the part that you guys see here, right, you're right on.
Well, you know, a lot, a lot of, a lot of your expenses are passed on to the next.
Line one eighty-nine.
One eighty-nine?
So you see the comments there that. But you're sharing.
You should be. I made a call.
Where they don't seem like things.
Did you share it?
No, that's what I thought it was, because.
There you go.
Okay, sorry about that, folks. I thought I was. So here's a comment about salaries. And they're lower, they're asking for an increase, and that's fine. But right now, we're taking a, a big step from seventy-five hundred to seventeen thousand. One approach could be a two-year approach to get salaries to where they should be. That's one area we could change, something less.
I know they looked at what there was for this for, um, just the other communities that are, are around our area, but they're getting paid and, and, um, that increase, they haven't had an increase in probably, I don't know, how many years? Eight, nine, ten years? Since they've had it. You know?
It's been a while, I know, I don't know.
And, and so, I mean, if we're, we're trying to keep our people in there, it's, it's, you know, I don't think that that's unrealistic compared to what there is.
No.
I mean, I think that, you know, looking at stuff too, um, that's just, that's a thought, I mean, it's, we need to have that department that's there that's strong.
We can change it. They're asking for seventeen, the current salary is seventy-five hundred, we can give them something in between there.
As for the total?
Both of these are come back. Turnout gear. Insurance. Consider taking some funds out of the feral. Sorry. Back a couple thousand.
Am I, am I looking? Are you looking at two forty-two?
Line two twelve, two twelve.
Two twelve, they're looking at two forty-two.
Forty-five hundred.
There you have one five, five thousand, take twenty-five hundred out.
What's that?
It said take out, uh, twenty-five hundred.
Mike, we need motions for each of these changes as we go through this or not?
I'll defer to Shirley. I don't do budget stuff.
You don't. Once you get through cutting, then you accept the budget, whatever.
We don't need to make it.
No.
So you just accept it, it's amended.
So do you want to go to five thousand?
Yeah, just two five, take somebody out of there.
Is that okay? The conferences, six thousand. These are national conferences where they were going to send three people to one conference a year. This is for some of the people that may be one or two years. Another one is this windland gear. Wildland gear.
What's that reimbursable, isn't it?
No, no, that's not reimbursable.
So the reason they're looking for fifteen sets is the, um, they have a new six wheeler they have with the unit on for doing brush fires. So right now, when they go. So right now when they go out for a brush fire, they have to wear their heavy equipment. Because if they're going to a regular fire versus some of the lighter weight.
I mean, it'd be awful tough to.
Less protection.
Yeah. I mean, it's awful tough to wear that full gear and be out there in the middle of the summer in a brush fire and try to turn around and and try to fire that way. I can, I can see where, where that's.
At the same time, that's there's just so much you can do with one hose.
So we want to, if we want to do that, we can cut it back some out of the 15 and maybe make it like 12,000, take three out.
I go for 5,000.
5,000, yeah.
That's five people.
We gotta do whatever we can for the people. I mean, the cost, water and sewer coming to town. We got so many people on fixed income.
Do you change it to 10,000 then?
What's that?
You change it to 10,000?
I was thinking 5,000.
Drop it to five or drop it to five?
Five, yeah. Five or seven.
He's saying drop it to five.
Two, five. That's like two and a half people.
Let's try to cut it in half then. Let's do 70.
There's 2,000 per person on that.
It's a thousand fifteen, oh, nevermind.
Thousand, thousand dollars.
Hey man, let's, let's cut it in half. Okay. Go to 7,500.
7,500.
That gives them half a set.
You think we leave a dollar?
Well, they're talking.
Well, we're talking.
Let's keep it even up 16.
Yeah, that's 16.
7,000.
Right. He's got a double seven.
Seven, seven, five.
Seven's what he's put up here. They get full sets.
So let's just see what we had here. So those changes were added.
Can anybody answer me what line 207 is about? Actually, the 44 is 32 is what we spent. About 8,500, but then we added 14,000 on the issue.
It's repair and maintenance of the vehicles, the fire trucks or what gear. Do we, are we expecting it to go up 200%?
How about, how about 353?
Would line the pole?
Be line 207.
Thank you.
Not sure we're kind of maintenance. We're talking about, I get it for replacing hoses and stuff like that. Sure that stuff's.
That's, it seems high, doesn't it?
Yes, it's 200% you're going up. So that needs to be. There's a reason that could be.
Well, remember that you're only through October. We don't know what else was, was in there off of that, you know, for, but we budgeted for 85 last year.
Their actual is 4,400.
No, I'm just saying through October, you don't know what else has been put in there.
But I mean, because we budgeted, it don't, we didn't spend it. So I mean, we can't continue just because it's candy in the jars, you know?
Well, my, I guess.
Yeah, if it's left over, it doesn't mean it's left there to spend.
I guess.
And I said at the council meetings here and say, well, it's in the budget. Well, we can spend it. Well, we don't need to spend it. Let's try and save our taxpayers some money.
I guess my, what my, what my point is, is we've only spent 4,400 of the 8,500 budget, then we raised it to 12,000. I don't see why we should budget for any more than we already budgeted. I have a hard time believing they're going to spend another 4100 dollars before the end of the, before the end of the year. I think we got two weeks.
We also spent 44.
So what do you want to put there?
Put it back to 8,500.
About 9,000.
The 9,000.
You know? Let's, let's take a look also at 353.
353?
Yeah. Cause we turned around and we bought 10 new tables that she went for, for general equipment for parking racks. Could we drop that down? Maybe 12,000 or 15,000?
What numbers?
353, 353.
So this is.
In shape for the tables in overall?
We, we replaced 10 of them, you know, so I mean, that was a good chunk that we did this year.
We're basically replacing the old wooden ones with.
So I mean, but we used, the budget was 25 and I know that we spent almost all of that, I think, this year for the.
I think a lot of that wasn't spent to write in November.
Yeah, but I mean, so we bought all that stuff that was in there that's going to show.
Add the tables in. How bad a shape are the tables? I don't think they're.
Have to ask the public works guy. Hey, what kind of shape the tables in anyway?
We just bought $12,000 worth of tables.
How many, so after that, how many are really?
20 more tables to replace over the next couple of years.
How bad are the tables? Are wood tables in right now?
Say that again, Carl.
How bad a shape are them? Twenty wood tables in?
The wooden tables need to get phased out to these new, newer ones that are maintenance free.
Well, we realize that again. I'm asking what kind of shape are the 20 tables in right now? I mean, we're trying to save some money for the taxpayers because we got water and sewer bills coming. That's what I'm hearing from this crowd. And are the tables just, we want to get maintenance free or are they going to fall into if we don't replace them?
Are we at risk?
You know?
I don't think we're at risk. I mean, there was a lot of maintenance part of it, but.
Can it, can it bounce?
Do we have the legs falling off of them or what's the deal?
No.
Yeah, can, can we?
Wait a year.
Wait another year?
That's just what I was thinking to hold on for another year.
This year.
Yeah, let's wait for another year.
Blessing the pain.
Yeah.
A little bit.
So can we, can we take 10 out of there?
We're signing 360 on the day 15.
353.
See, no, you can't take 15 out of there. Go ahead and buy a table this year.
Then leave, leave him seven?
Yeah, I'll try that. I mean, it's a good chunk that we can hit with, with that right away. So what are we going to?
I, I kind of look at it this way, with Kane ordering them at the end of the year, that left him that cushion to use for stuff in between. In case he didn't have that money coming into the year, he'd be able to buy that oil filter he needed for something along the way. Gives, it gives him the cushion to work with too. He doesn't need that.
Well, this is an offer Kane, but this is, you know, parks and recs. But I mean, you want to go down to 12 or you want to do 10? What do you want to do?
If you want down to be a 10, from 30th, better than half.
Was it 22?
It's a 22. Yeah, you're looking at the wrong one.
Let's make it 15.
Okay.
But you're setting it at 15?
No.
Which number are you?
353.
353.
What about garbage?
Oh, I want to go back to first responders. Like we talked about fire department, we'll leave it first responders. Let's go back to them for a second.
Wait, what line you looking at right now?
Starting. Starting at 222.
222?
222. 222. Well, the fire department salaries we left, is that right?
No, I think some of this too for the first responders is we're going to have some money coming from the township. And, and we haven't got that plugged in. So.
That doesn't have a home yet?
Well, we have a number in the revenue side, but it's very, it's not final course, but.
Yeah, cause I know we're, we're asking, because that's been neglected for quite a few years on increasing that.
First responders do a lot more. They have you know, they have, they've had over 120 runs this year. So.
I know.
So they are busy and reports those are township probably.
Not more, but.
I thought it was in the 90%.
Well, that's when you look at, when you start cutting back on it, what's the life worth if you can't get there quick enough to be able to save a life? You know, it's, is 15,000 worth of life? I think it is.
Well, I got a question, question 238. Line 238. The actual is 5341, budget was six. And that included a $2,875 transfer, the transfer switch. That was in the actual already, correct? Well, that's not needed for next year. The transfer switch must be for the generator running the building or, or running the transfer switch for electricity, correct?
I mean, that one transfer was.
That's the for the first responders.
Oh, okay.
Thinking they got the generator over there. So we're looking at 242 of the apparel. T-shirts. We cut that back to 1,500.
I guess, I think that the comment was is if they're, they do work with somebody and they're bleeding and you get blood on the, on the shirt. Do you want to, you want to wash that shirt or do you want to dispose of that shirt? Cause you don't know what's in the blood that you have behind it, you know, so. Those are some things that, you know, if I was that responder that's out there, I think I'd want a new shirt.
And I think it was being identifiable too, as part of the group that, that's responding.
And again, this is, this is a budget item, line item that was not in there last year. And they were using it off a different fund. So that's why it's just being identified.
More than doubling too.
We still on line 242?
But there was no prior, prior budget to that.
Keith Alden?
That seems like a lot of money for a t-shirt.
Well, again, if you look at the number of people that are out there and if you turn around and, and if, if you're doing an emergency or you're out there as a first responder. You want to wear your shirt that's got somebody else's blood on it when you don't know what's going on? I mean, that's a question.
I didn't say that, Jim. I said, it seems like a lot of money for t-shirts.
By the time you get a shirt and you, you have an Orinoco logo put on it. Because you want to be able to identify people that are coming to a door. That it's a part of, of the Orinoco first responders. You've, you've got to have that. So it's not just a t-shirt that there is per side that you can get at Kmart. Or Walmart or whatever. So I, I'm just, I mean, it's, it's some of those things that you have to look at a little bit more in depth than.
Oh, right. But I mean, 4,200 dollars worth of shirts, a lot of shirts.
No, it's 2,500. 2,500.
So do you want to reduce it or not?
How many people are on first responders?
28.
28?
Or is it 28?
Do they, do any of them already have shirts?
Do any of them what?
Already have shirts?
Oh, yeah. But I don't know. I didn't know that they had.
Well, you see them, you don't know what you're done.
Yeah, if you want to take out $500, let's, you know, let's make it 2,000, take out 500, but I think that that's important for them to have the gear. They'll take 500 out.
Change it to two?
Yeah.
We're going to change it there. Then let's go back up to fire department.
Which one?
212.
They already dropped it down from 7,500 to five and.
Why do we have, why do we have the fire department at 300 dollars a person?
Sometimes our equipment's more expensive, but you know, I mean, if you want to drop it down a little bit more, but.
I think you know, can we drop any expenses on EDA a little bit too? Cause I know that's up there. Can we shave, can we shave, shave across the board?
What number are you looking at?
Very. Line 422. Get a contract if it's fixed. Salaries, this is where some activity from the city administrator. Or the deputy clerk, some guys getting involved with those. We could cut maybe supplies down to 1,000 or 800 dollars.
I'm just looking, we had our budget off a salary at 40. Our actual is 42. We didn't have anything that was budgeted for that.
So what's, what's that transfer out 24, 150 on line 2432?
That's a good question. So that comes out of our CIP fund. So 100,000 of that will be dedicated to any, to supplementing our sewer plant operation. It's our cushion because we start operation in April, March, April, but we're bringing users on. So our user rate may not support our expenditures. So we're going to borrow, we did a cash flow analysis over the first whole 20 years, but the first four or five years, we did a cash value analysis of that's kind of our insurance to help us support that in case the users.
So those are funds to, to operate the plant in case the sewer rates don't cover it.
We watch our sewer budget, expenses and revenue. That's kind of our cushion. And the other 50,000, the majority of that is towards a pickup that we're buying a new pickup from on a state bid. That's it's 37,000 and then it's equipped to close to 45, 47, 48, 49, 50 bags.
Do we already have the pickup?
No, it's ordered. It was ordered last summer with Carlos Chevrolet out of Ankeny, Iowa. It's a state bid, so.
For 50 of that.
That was already approved. Yeah.
Well, it's basically.
So that's where the department pick upers.
So it's a water department pickup or?
Public works, yeah.
So where are we at now with the corrections there that we made right now?
Well, we're down to a 24% increase.
I'd like to go back to line 253. We will see.
Grab this up in 10 minutes. I'd agree.
We definitely need all of this equipment.
So I don't see a way to responders here. So let's decide what the idea was.
Oh my.
They wanted to buy a container. We, that $3,000, we took that off of their second container. That was three, so we took, removed that already. So that was to store all of these supplies. So so there's no place to store. It's really a mute point here except we had 2,000 in the, this year's budget, we only spent 250. So I think that's where we could cut back probably to 1,000.
1,000 in there. I'll do that.
What's that?
To 1,000.
To 1,000.
Should I change it back to 1,000?
1,000.
Why is curious, but so many, when, when the emergency pops up like a tornado or something, you usually get so many people pop in and just start donating stuffs.
So again, going back to EDA, can we, can we lower contract services a little bit on EDA?
It's a signed contract. 30,000.
So it's guaranteed.
Contracts, that's to be broken.
It's already been signed. And that allows a seat a person every Thursday, every weekend. It meant to you go that, go that way.
And, and these are some of the growth things that we're looking at with the community too. That, that weren't in years ago, but we need to have the growth. We've, we've got to got to have some of those people that are out there to develop with, with what, I mean, every other city has got seed on. We, we're the first. We've been waiting and waiting. So this is part of the growth. I think it needs to be down to the city.
So what is seen a need for supplies for twelve hundred dollars? Line four twenty-eight.
A lot of it's postage. Postage, yeah, we're looking at a, now we can. We could.
Line four twenty-eight.
Reduce that to eight hundred, probably to be spreading. You know, it keeps happening in there failing. For respondents. Eight hundred. Back to P and Z, we haven't touched base there.
Line three.
One sixty-three. So line one sixty-nine. It's ninety-three thousand. Sixty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-two is the contract we signed or with WSB. With this uh twelve-month project to go back and. Uh, take the one fifty, one fifty-one codes and reconstruct them, make them easier to read. Pictures and eliminate the redundancy through them and everything, so. And the other thirty thousand is for Stan Tech planning services when we get a. Lot splits, not Joe's area, but it's areas that Phil Carlson handles that. He handles all the uh variances and lot splits and the background of, you've seen that already. In the last couple of months about some lot splits, so those are services that we. Set aside for the planning services.
I just think, and, and I see that, but I, I also realize too with, with the changes we're gonna have in the codes. There's gonna be more stuff that's gonna be coming up for the planning services. You know, I mean, that's, that's just being realistic of, of what there is that's coming. I mean, you could, you could knock it down, but I think it's probably gonna go up over that too, so you have a budget, but what are you gonna do? When you spend all of it and.
I'm zoning the. Organs EAW, what is that? We haven't spent anybody there, it's fourteen thousand.
What, what line are you on?
One seventy-five.
I, I don't know what was put in there for that, I could. Any idea on that one?
Is that something we can?
Something should come out, I mean, if we ain't spending on that.
Well, I don't know what it is or what was put in there for that, but yeah.
There was no actual and the budget was twelve thousand last year, sorry.
Let's see, we take ten thousand out of there?
Yeah.
Make it forty-five hundred?
Yeah. Maybe I could take, I could take, yeah, four thousand, four hundred.
Well, reimbursable, line one seventy-one. Last year it's zero actual, we'd budgeted five and we raised it to six.
Well, some of those reimbursable fees that there were, I think, were associated with uh the water and sewer, weren't they? So that, that might have been a part of that. Or, or it could be with, with um. Whatever we charge for building permits that there were. So I think we're looking at that permits not covering.
All the PFA is up in financial administration.
So it's a miscellaneous expenses at one seventy-six. Budgeted five hundred last year, zero actual and we raised it to six hundred.
Where are you at?
Line one seventy-six. Drop it back down to three hundred, we didn't use anything, what are we, what are we using it for?
What line is this?
One seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Three hundred. With one seventy-two, we had reimbursed on the legal fees. We only spent twenty-one hundred of a five thousand dollar budget, but we raised it to six. We go back to five?
Sure should be able to.
On line one seventy-two.
Make it five thousand.
Make it five thousand.
See where we're at now.
I picked that pretty good, you're getting that ten, knocking that ten off that one.
So we're twenty-two point eight. So instead of twenty-six now, it's twenty-two point eight. Like four two four. I can zoning.
Did we change one seventy-one? We dropped that, or do we just leave it the same?
Line one fifty-seven. Legal notices. Budgeted five thousand last year and we only used twenty-one hundred of it. Most of our legal notices are passed forward to for lot splits and stuff like that, that's. Born into the uh request.
Well, yeah, but we, again, the people have put in the request for a lot of this stuff. It, we don't have enough money for what we're charging to take care of it.
Well, I understand that, that's another thing we need to work on that other end. But we, but we budgeted five thousand last year, we use.
What number are you on again on this?
On line one fifty-seven. We actually, we used actual twenty-one oh five, we budgeted five and we raised it to fifty-five hundreds. Let's go back to five.
Oh, four.
Four works for me.
Four would be better. You only spent forty-one hundred here, now you still got a hundred percent.
Almost, yeah. Close enough.
That's, we don't know what October or, you know, beyond October was.
Yeah, we've had five thousand seventy-five hundred, so it's.
I mean, we were looking at uh twenty-three. Is that twenty, at twenty-two, it was pretty close to that. We were at forty-nine and we budgeted five, uh, twenty-one was seven thousand.
What line are you on, Jim?
Uh, same one you were talking about, one fifty-seven. In prior years, it's, you know, it's been, been up there.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, so I don't, I, I would leave it that way looking, you know, the history that goes along with that.
Leave it at the fifty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think um, let's see, wasn't one fifty-six the same way? Yeah, one fifty-six was the same way.
Yeah, cause you were at the actual at thirty-two. In twenty twenty-two.
The legal fees are. They cover a lot of.
Yeah.
Legal fees for orgases for P and Z.
So you put line one fifty-seven back to.
Yeah, leave it at fifty-five, yeah, and the other one too. If you look at the history, it's certain state.
Well, yeah, you spend thirty thousand on a planner alone, just for planning. And nothing else.
Exactly.
So I mean, it's, it's. Well, let's take like.
About sixty-seven, one thirty-nine.
How about one eighty? Line one eighty. A building inspection, we had put fifty thousand. We used twenty-one thousand, we had budgeted thirty-eight. And we increased thirty percent off of that, we were looking for reducing.
Just paid two invoices today, those aren't in there.
Well, I mean, is, is that realistic off of that, right, of, of where we're at, like at thirty-eight or forty?
We're looking at business, building services, we've, we're looking at three different companies right now. And uh, there's fees that go with those, sometimes there's some. Software fees, we haven't, we'll come back to January with that number, but.
I mean, you, I mean, I, I was just looking, I mean, is, is, you wanna keep with the fifty or do you wanna make it forty?
Well, remember this, we've got all the connections that are coming in next year. Normally, we've been doing a hundred building permits, we're at over a hundred and fifty some right now.
Okay, then that.
I'm expecting closer to three hundred next year with all the connections.
Then, then we're good with what goes on.
So just keep that in mind when you're thinking it's probably gonna go over.
Oh, no, this is, this is why I'm asking, okay, so I think that's good, then we'll just leave it there.
Question, do we pass those, do we pass those fees out with the uh, with the assessment?
Oh, absolutely, all the.
Down there stations, that's what you're referring to, right?
Yeah, these are just building permit fees. Yep.
Line one forty-eight.
We used.
Eleven thousand. Eleven thousand thirty?
One thirty-nine.
Is that where you, we're looking at uh coming in with some new programs with that or?
One forty-eight.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm just trying to say it's out there.
Line one forty-two has a new software. And additional computer for employees.
Yeah, I was just like, cause we're, we budgeted nine thousand last year and we only used two hundred and fifty-three dollars.
So when did, where did we hit them? So previous year you used six thousand.
No, on, on one forty-eight.
One forty-eight.
Previous year you used.
Oh, six thousand, yeah.
Sixty-one dollars in twenty twenty-two. Do I cut that back down to seventy-five hundred?
Yeah, I think the highest was what? Fifty-nine? I think.
Seventy-five hundred?
That's, that's just seventy-five hundred.
One thirty-nine, look at line one thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Umbrella insurance. We actually spent fourteen with.
That's a hundred percent.
I think you could go to two thousand dollars pretty easy there.
Well, I make my question.
That's on, I'm guessing umbrella insurance is definitely a place you'll see it.
We shouldn't have.
That's everything for everything.
You shouldn't have.
I mean, that goes down to the penny, so I think somebody came up with that, that, you know, realizes that's actual cost.
Well, it says twenty twenty-three plus twenty percent, what it's saying. That's what, that's the note right next to it. This twenty twenty-three actual cost plus twenty percent.
Actual from October, right?
Well, my question.
I don't have more, another, more bills in last year plus, I don't know.
My question, some of them insurances, isn't it cheaper to do a bond on insurance than it would be to actual carry insurance?
I'm guessing this is umbrella insurance that the LMCIT trust gives us or offers us to all of our buildings and. Insurance and our divided buildings.
If you wanted to cut it down, you could do with the actual where we're at this year, do a fifteen hundred.
Who was the one we did the?
What's, what's the, what's the cap on the umbrella one, you know?
One million or five million probably.
Just curious.
Okay. What else do you see? That power on this that. Earlier workshops.
Can we do something, see where we're at?
Well, the CIP, I think we, we need uh, such a with the truck going in there with our other expenses, but that was on um. Line uh, four thirty-two.
Was it line two forty-two?
No, that was on four thirty-two, but that's what we had talked about, is that right, right, that's after the CIP, it was on four thirty-two? That's one fifty.
Right, that's one fifty.
Yeah, so I mean, they've got it, we gotta keep that in there.
Yeah, we can't touch that, no, it's, it's, it's too risky to minimize that. Back up on the fire department, saw something. Line two oh seven.
We already dropped that down.
We're gonna cut that down to nine thousand.
Well, if you're looking at line two. Fifteen. I know they wanna send three people. And the conferences are great, but you know, there's two thousand there.
Let, let, let's go down to two people, up to that and drop it down to four.
The fourth album? Put on the first responders, they have the same type of requests. Line two forty-five.
Forty-one.
Two people.
So now we're down to.
You can do that for.
Twenty-two.
Okay, um, let's uh.
Three oh three? Can we reduce that a little bit?
Which one lines it, three oh three?
Yeah.
Let's do this before we go there.
Which one?
Let's go to line two eighteen and reduce it to three radios instead of four. The fire department and first responders.
I don't know, it's, wait, you, you're gonna have to replace those things, I mean, we're, we're in trouble with those, we're.
Right, some of them.
You gotta be able to communicate with a fireman on both sides of a fire truck, you gotta be able to do that.
You know about pagers?
The pagers?
It's my understanding that pagers do the same thing. You get the same information, information on the pager, pager that you can get through your iPhone from the county.
Well, the only thing is, is if you're in a fire, are you gonna pull out your iPhone and, and try to do it and work with it? Are you gonna be talking back and forth?
They say your pager, not your radio.
Talked about, there was stuff that goes to an iPhone which is different than what it is, so there's a way that they were talking about at the fire department, but. I think you need to communicate with these people, you're, you're in the middle of an emergency situation, you've gotta communicate.
I get that.
I agree.
But we, but we, but we have four for the, we have four for here and four for the first responder.
But you gotta look at replacing all of those, okay, so what are you gonna do next year? Double up on that and have it that much more, I just don't think, I mean, you've gotta replace it, they're old.
And that's kinda why.
Them radios and stuff should be kinda on the same program as you have, as you have with the mowers. They should be getting, they should be in a continual circle to be.
You gotta realize that the years have gone by, that nobody has put anything in. So ten years ago, they should have started this, okay, but it didn't get done, now the can has gone down the road. And you can't kick it anymore, okay, you've gotta.
It took ten years to hook up the power on the front of the tail, front of the fire hall tubes. Ten years.
You know, my concern is everybody is, is looking at this and we're, we'll, we'll come back on it, but what are you gonna do next year when, when you've got this? You're gonna come in here and you're gonna say, how come you guys didn't put it in last year? And now it's gonna be that much more this year, coming up next year.
But you gotta, gotta remember, these twelve people out here don't have nine thousand dollar sewer bill to tend to next year.
I understand.
They all gotta dig in the sewer to their house and it's about nine thousand dollars. You know, and so we gotta cut our budget.
That's before you start digging.
Right, we gotta, well, no, that's, that's what we gotta assess, nine thousand, but I mean. The share of the people, they don't have no, they gotta go get a loan. For that, that can go on their taxes, so, I mean, we gotta deal for the people here.
I understand that.
I mean.
You know, again, we should have been doing this five years ago.
Yeah.
You know, and it wasn't done five years ago. Wasn't done four years ago, I mean, last year we tried to, to kick it up a little bit, what was going on, but again. You know, it's, it's a reality of, of, of what there is, what are you gonna do next year?
Then get three radios this year, three next year, three the year after, you know?
I guess I, I would rather see, you know, you know, where, where are things that we can cut that we're not risking safety? We're not risking things. Like our fire department. Yes, I mean, we're, we're cutting back. I, I totally get it and, and there's gotta be squeeze across the board. You know, I see things like cutting trees. Twenty-four thousand dollars. I would rather say, let's, let's back off on that. Instead of backing off on a radio for communication. That is three oh, uh, three.
Okay, what about if we cut that back to fifteen instead of twenty-four?
Cause you know, it could be just for a year even.
That's, I just want to jump back to the pagers for a minute. I don't think anybody's saying we, we shouldn't replace our pagers.
No.
So if we replace three of them, they would drop the eighteen thousand down to eleven thousand five hundred. So we got.
Well, we're, we're.
Instead of getting eight, we get six, we get three for the first responders and three for the, uh, uh, fire department. They're getting new, they're getting six new instead of eight.
Like, well, my, one of my questions is, are we paying your and we reimbursing for cell phones? Are we doing both?
I don't, is there cellphone reimbursement?
Is there cellphone reimbursement?
I don't think so.
No, we're reimbursing city halls.
That, that, that's for the, for the workers.
Well, the works, that's, that's a different deal.
I mean, please set up for three radios for each one.
Well, if, if next year, if next year we have to go up to five, then we'll, we'll realize that, that that's what it's gonna be next year.
Why, why do we have?
Let's, if we wanna try to.
How old are the oldest, how old are the newest radios in the fire department?
They're, they're old, of this stuff, that they can't even get batteries for them. They can't, I mean, it's.
Some of them, some of them they can't, some of them they can.
They're, they're, well, they're not all the same, hey?
Right, right, exactly.
But they're.
Why wouldn't we, why can't we go three every year? You know?
Well, and, and again, and, and I'll, I'll go ahead and go that way if we wanna do it, okay? My thing is, we've, we've missed it for years.
You may live in this town that long, so I mean, don't say we missed it for years. I hear about water sewer projects should have been done years ago. Well, it probably ain't costing any more today than it was years ago, cause inflation, your wages are all up and everything. So I mean, you gotta be able to afford stuff. You can't. Have a golden spoon.
I'll do three.
Three?
I mean, you can't have a golden spoon just because you want one.
So we're going three, three radios and three.
We're, we're on, on that one.
Line two eighteen would be one of them. You know, we're looking at forty-five, taking forty-five hundred off of theirs, should be thirteen five, right?
Oh yeah, I think rather they're on there. Should be thirteen five instead of eleven five.
Well, that's, uh, two eighteen and what was the other one?
Forty-six.
Two forty-six? We gotta get the trees too, so let's, let's hit that trees.
Thirteen five, Island.
Trees?
No, thirteen five, line two forty-six.
Forty-six should be thirteen five.
Then let's do the trees and see where we're at.
No, it's eleven five, we're turning it down to three.
Three, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Thousand for.
I had two.
Thousand for each of the radios or the pagers and thirty.
Five hundred times three is ten five plus a thousand.
Yep, times three.
Times four.
Times three.
Well, so the number is off before.
So the eighteen thousand was off before, right? Three times thirty-five is ten thousand five hundred, right?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
You gotta add, you gotta three pagers instead of one.
Fourteen five?
Should be thirteen five.
Be fourteen five. Should be thirteen five. Cause there was a number that was off and start.
So change it up in the fire department too.
The, the numbers, the number shouldn't have been nineteen to start with.
Is that other number?
To the trees, where we at here with trees, trees? There we go, three oh one. Wait, three oh three. Bring that down to fifteen.
Which line, three oh three?
Three oh three. Bring it down to fifteen instead of twenty-four.
So what was the trees? They just took out the park with them costs. That's just run up the, around the actual for this year.
The nineteen?
It's thirteen or eleven nine, I don't remember.
What are we looking at for total now?
Eight point four.
We got about fourteen thousand this year so far. This would be line three oh three.
I think we're there.
Fifteen.
So, right now, we're looking at a point four one five, which is a twenty percent, twenty point four percent increase over.
Well, we're sitting here having fun, those people whacking at us, mate.
Yeah. Any other changes?
We gotta get on to the meeting. Hopefully, they're gonna be here until two o'clock in the morning.
So. We look at the resolution. Expenditures is one million, six seventy, six twenty-four. We want to balance it out, so this is giving us a. Revenues of one sixty, six twenty-four forty. One million, two forty-eight. Three oh six. Total lever leverage would be, one two ninety-five, three twenty-four.
It was one two forty-eight, three oh six, general levy?
Yes. Yeah. For general levy, we add our debt service of the two bonds. This is one two ninety-five, three twenty-four. Go ahead and make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty. With our total scratch preliminary, total levy, of one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? The only comment I would make is that next time we have budget workshops, we need to make sure we have them and we all attend them. And not have to go through this line by line process again at the next budget meeting. We had two meetings. Oh, we had three, but it didn't work out for a reason. So originally we had five scheduled, uh, we've had two, but we really need to concentrate on meeting our workshops. And doing our one line by line, I have to not here in front of everybody. Kind of embarrassing. We're all held accountable for that. So let's try and do a better job next year. Any other comments?
Yeah, sorry for being in, in Arizona, but I tried to get on, I came, I applied to get on. And the city hall was closed, Jim was filling in, so then they wouldn't let me on, so.
Carl, that's out of order. That's a discussion we've had before.
Why was it not ordered?
After bringing it up again.
Just a second, you were knocking me down because I didn't attend the meeting. I don't appreciate it. I just wanted the whole crowd to know I tried to attend the meeting. So there, that, that's all it's final said.
Any other comments? Say no, let's take a voice phone.
Me or I first?
I.
Councilor Phillips?
Aye.
Councilor Pendergast?
Aye.
Councilor Richards?
Aye.
Cardinal Crobs?
Aye.
That's approved? Thank you for everybody's comments.
Oh, you're in a board meeting. Can you open the meeting for comment or is that not possible?
Um, we have. We have a public forum coming up now. So we had, we, we took care of our two hearings. So, um, next time is public forum. Well, those that would like to speak.
Did you do the water bills?
Yeah, that was the first one we did.
Sorry. The public forum is a three minute time limit. The city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be part of the business and must adhere to data privacy rules. No employee's name may be used. Please expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. To address the city council during public forum, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and fill out the form provided. Speakers will be recognized only once. Uh, you'll be timed beginning with the green card is raised. Yellow card indicates you have thirty seconds. Left of the red card indicates you have a three minute time limit and must stop, so. With that, if anybody would like to speak to public forum, we have one gentleman, Athias Harder.
You, uh, mayor and council members, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, speak here. So the city put out, uh, request proposals for garbage hauling. Um, three, uh, proposals were received, um, on the bid form that said, when something, proposals must include all the elements cited in the bid form. Uh, element number two, residential single sort recycling with weekly they pick up. So again, you receive three, uh, proposals, uh, only one proposal from Harders, uh, as far as I understand, uh, met that element, uh, which says all elements must be met. So, uh, can't say a hundred percent, percent for certain, uh, at the last monthly meeting. Um, council members did not have the bid results in their packet. Um, the mayor was the only one with the, the bid results, uh, in his packet, so everyone was forced at the meeting to, to try to make a, a quick decision. Um, the council decided to, uh, well, the mayor made a motion to have the city negotiate a contract with waste management. Uh, the motion passed, uh, we sent an email, uh, to the mayor, the council members, uh, asking to reconsider because this was made in a very quick way. The council didn't, they, they didn't see the, the R F P that was sent out. So they were forced to make this decision, they didn't even see the result. So, so a very quick timing, we, we said, you know, we requested, uh, respectfully that, that we reconsidered. Now, at the beginning of the meeting, uh, it was stated that, uh, the, the council has already, or the, the contract has already been approved and signed, so it seems that that's been, uh, if the council approved a motion to have the city negotiate a contract with waste management, the agenda says approve the contract. And the mayor says it's already been approved and signed. I don't know how anyone can say with all these facts that this is legal, ethical, and just plain fair. And how, what? What is the mode? I, I don't understand. Why would a mayor go out on a limb? I don't know if any council members requested to, to go over this item tonight, I, I don't know, but why would a mayor go out on a limb? And when a council authorized to negotiate a contract and go ahead and approve and sign the contract? I don't, I don't, I don't understand that. Again, it does not seem to me legal, fair, ethical, and it's, I don't know why that would happen, so. That, that I guess is our, our concern. Um, the contract's already been signed, I guess, you know, I've been requested today to, to see that contract, see the date it was signed. I guess we'll proceed when we get that information, but this, this does not seem right. I mean, and this is not about winning or losing. I mean, I've, I've won, I've lost, you know, we all win some, we lose some. Um, it's a matter of due process and what's, what's fair. In a fair way, I understand that.
Anybody else like to speak to public forum?
Thank you.
Back to your budget process. Guys have a tough job. I've been through a lot of budgets and it's not easy to do. Um, I would support, uh, fire department, the needs, I support the people who need salary increases. But two things, mayor, you, you said caught my attention. If I was, if I heard you right, you said that, yeah, you need to have perhaps a fourth person for the public work supervision and you need, uh, accountant to help you figure out all the water bills coming in. Why couldn't you build that cost of those two, so you, you're, you're probably around twelve hundred, three thousand, four hundred thousand here. These people are gonna call you, you have tens of thousands of dollars. Why don't you add that on to the cost of electric or the water bill and the cost of the sewer bill? Your system is discriminatory. Yes, people like yourself that don't have those services, it's ten years before they're ever gonna go up on top of the hill. Maybe, maybe. And I'm gonna be paying this through my taxes for the next ten years. Why don't you address it to the people who get the service? So if I get water service, I get sewer service and you need an accountant to keep track by bill, add a few cents on there, let everybody pay for it. And you just saved yourself thousands of dollars here that you probably have built in for two new positions. Just my thought. The last one is, you see, and you need some software, uh, in administration. People's electric sits in this city. Every month I get their newsletter, every month I see where all the money for the roundup, uh, project goes, which I participate in. And they're buying everything from tennis courts to bicycles to what you name it. Every school, every little town around here gets thousands of dollars every, uh, quarter from people's roundup. Why don't you go and ask them for some software money? I bet they'll do it like that. Suggestion.
Uh, Dylan Christopherson again. Uh, first, thank you, uh, uh, I appreciate the amount of effort that just went into the last hour, two hours of the session. I would propose in the future that if you're gonna make adjustments to department's budgets, they be present and have input. Uh, nobody knows better than the fire department. You know, if you give them a twenty percent budget increase, they know where they need to spend that money. Uh, and if we start going through the entire city budget, uh, in this room with these people making those decisions, mistakes will be made. And so I think it's, it's important to rely on the experience of city staff to help make those decisions.
Second call for public hearing. And third and final call for public hearing, or public forum, sorry. But that was closed public forum at eight twenty. Next item is our, um, Oracle County Law Enforcement, just, uh, working on some different software to give us a more timely report, but I know Sergeant Rin is working on that. working on some different software to give us a more timely report, but I know Sergeant Rin is working on that. Water and sewer. In your packet is, um, update letters. Number thirty-four. We also have a, a request. All right, Chris, do you have any questions for Joe regarding the updates on our contract of one wastewater treatment plant or infrastructure? The collection system contracts two and three. Very briefly, the, right now, we're looking at a potential startup of the plant in late or, uh, mid-March to mid-April. Based on the current schedule we have, we're getting some electrical panels that are due here for the first three years, so. Any other comments? Uh, we have an action item. There's a letter. Joe, do you want to explain what the letter is essentially doing with the funds?
Yeah, just, uh, took a look at our budgets for engineering services on the two projects, really the wastewater treatment facility and the collection conveyance project. Uh, kind of the bottom line is we are gonna be under budget if you add up the two projects. Um, we're well under budget on the wastewater treatment plant. On the collection conveyance system, we're right at budget or projected to be maybe one percent over budget. And so what I'm kind of asking to do is kind of allow us to rebalance those budgets, take some budget from the collection or the, take some budget from the wastewater project, um, construction services and transfer it to the Fitzgerald project, so we have a little bit more budget. Like I said, kind of the bottom line is if you add them both up, we're, we're well under budget, even with the additional work with the contractor or the additional duration of the project, but, uh, you know, just to allow us to kind of rebalance those two budgets. We're not asking for any new budgets. It's just kind of a housekeeping thing from at least my perspective.
Make a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to, to adjust that, uh, so that we can balance out.
Any other comments? That's a good feeling to be in a situation like this, and we can move plenty of money around and still need our schedules and budgets, and no, schedules not budgets for sure. All in favor, say if you're saying aye. Close. Approved. P and Z, we have an action item for a lot split in variant at four fifty-second Avenue Northwest. Speak to that.
If you do anything, let me hear. Um, yeah, I was just, um, looking at, at the split in a variant at four fifty-second Avenue Northwest. Uh, let me just. So. Uh, the conditions of approval for the lot split. Um, and, and they recommend the lot split, okay? It's, um, the lot split is considered on a, on a variance being approved, a lot split of parcel B, which is thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-four square feet, which is below the city's minimum requirement, lot size of twenty thousand square feet. Uh, the lot split, uh, if approved, will be the location, um, they wanted to have. The lot split is approved if the location of the existing garage of parcel can be confirmed as being at least six feet from the new side lot line of parcel B. If the setback is less than six feet, the survey shall be adjusted to maintain a minimum of six feet setbacks, such as the adjustment may be appeared or approved by the city engineer without additional reviewing of the planning and zoning commission and city council. The location of the two temporary sheds in the southeast corner of parcel A needs to be verified, and the sheds need to be moved if necessary, uh, so they do not straddle the lot line. The building permit will be issued for a new parcel B until the sewer, will not be issued until the new parcel B until city sewer is available on the lot and can be verified by a city engineer. And that other engineering requirements of the city engineer will be met before the building permit will be issued for parcel B. And the city fees and charges paid. Uh, also, there should be some sewer charges that were on there too, of what was done with that, and that was not in here, so it's gotta be added. So findings of fact for the lot split. Uh, Stephen Holtz owns the existing lot at four fifty-second Avenue Northwest in Aronoco. The existing lot is thirty-four thousand, three hundred feet, square feet in area. The lot split will be a new parcel A of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and five square feet. And new parcel B will be thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four square feet, as deflected in the certificate of survey prepared by WSE Massy Engineering Land and Surveying LTD dated seven thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the city zoning code has a minimum residential lot of twenty thousand square feet. Municipal sewer is expected to be available as soon as the property. Uh, the city is considering reducing the minimum lot size and standard once the sewer is available. The thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-four square foot size of parcel B is likely to meet the minimum lot size that the city will adopt for the new sewered lots and therefore reasonable size for the, the new lot, if connected to the municipal sewer. Uh, the city zoning code has a minimum side setback, uh, structure of six feet for residential lots. The zoning code requires lot splits to result that the parcels meet the zoning standards. And then the existing garage for parcel A or the proposed lot split will meet or will be revised to meet the six-foot setback for the new lot line. So that's, uh, the lot split. You wanna go over that one first, or do the variants next?
Yeah, let's do real. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one first. Deal with the lot split. Do you make a motion?
Do I make a motion, uh, to approve the lot split? Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, second.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, thirty.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, just okay?
Oh, sorry.
Any other comments? So the, uh, comment about moving. That's where the variance comes in. Okay, this is the philosophy. Any other comments? Say none, let's, uh, take a voice vote.
Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
Councilor Pendergrass.
Aye.
Councilor Richards.
Aye.
Councilor Crowes.
Aye.
Mayor Icarus.
Aye.
May sir.
Variants. Resolution twenty twenty.
Three to thirty-two, two. Okay, for the variants, again, on the same property, um, the variance for the lot size of parcel B is valid only if the lot split is approved by the city and recorded by the county. And if the sewer is available to that lot. And number two, all engineering requirements for city engineer must be met before the building permit is issued for parcel B. And all city fees are charges and paid. And again, this one, we've got to have the sewer too that's on that. That's already been done. Uh, finding of facts, uh, Stephen Holtz owns the existing lot at four fifty-second Avenue Northwest in Aronoco. New parcel B and the lot split is proposed to thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four square feet, as deflected on the certificate of surveillance prepared by WSE Massy Engineering and Land Surveying LTD dated seven thirty-one, twenty-three. Uh, the city zoning code has a minimum residential lot of twenty thousand square feet. Municipal sewer is expected to be available soon to the property. The city is considering reducing the number, the minimum lot size standard once the sewer is available. The thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-four square foot lot size of parcel B is likely to meet the minimum lot size that the city will adopt for a new sewer lots and therefore reasonable size for the new lot if connected to municipal sewer. The city zoning code has a minimum side setback with structures of six feet on residential lots. The zoning code also requires lot splits to result that the parcels that meet all zoning standards. Uh, the existing garage of parcel A and the proposed lot split need to be uh, revised to meet at least a six-feet setback on the new lot line. And the request meets the criteria for approving the variance section one five one point four oh one. Do I make a motion to approve the variants?
Second. Any other comments? I want a question about the lot size and there any effort by P and Z to start to look at that? Our lot sizes?
It's on the top of the list of when we get going with, uh, the new code, so they know that, yeah.
But that's not, I'm gonna.
Uh, depends upon when we get started with doing it, so I don't have a timeframe for that, but, uh, it's on the top of the list to look at right away.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Say none, all voice vote.
Okay, Councilor Pendergrass.
Aye.
Councilor Richards.
Aye.
Councilor Crowes.
Aye.
Mayor Icarus.
Aye.
And Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
It's approved, very good. Last item on P and Z is an update on the Two Sisters Development Agreement.
We're, we're working on it. We're on a third draft. We're almost done with it. Probably by the end of the week, we'll have a draft with the developer. There's some issues that, and it's been going, the meeting's been going on a long time tonight, so unless somebody has questions, I can answer questions, but we're working on it.
Yeah, okay. Uh, fire department. We have a resolution thirty-three, twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three. Authorizing the acceptance of this year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four federal emergency management agency assistance to firefighters grants. Something with, uh, the county fire, no, there's area fire departments. A grant for two hundred and forty-eight thousand or check the number, there's two forty-eight. Oh, one forty-eight, but there's too many numbers there. Whereas.
Yeah. Grant request is for two hundred and forty-eight thousand, forty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Federal funding is twenty-two, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and two cents. And the local cost share is twenty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety cents. That was whatever line that goes to be changed.
Or two hundred and forty-two.
Right.
Record number here.
It'd be right.
Right here in this.
Very last.
Page three of five.
It's shaking, two four eight.
On page forty.
All forty-eight and ninety-two.
Drop the one.
Okay.
Any other comments? Make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three. Second. Any other comments? All right, make a voice vote.
Councilor Richards.
Aye.
Councilor Crowes.
Aye.
Mayor Icarus.
Aye.
Councilor Phillips.
Aye.
Councilor Pendergrass.
Aye.
I make a motion, we approve Victor Jensen's resignation from the fire department.
Second.
All in favor, any comments? Jim Richards.
Sounds sad, he referring to that in May.
All in favor, say if you're probably saying aye.
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 Adam Shapers retiring after seventeen years of service. We thank him for that very much. I make a motion, we approve the Adam Shapers retirement.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say if you're probably saying aye.
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 With the council's permission, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the new officers for the fire department, the fire relief association, and the first responders.
The training officer, right? No, that's where all of them. Oh, you're doing all of them.
I'm just all, okay, in the group, yeah.
Yeah. All second.
Any other comments?
I just, just curious, they're all in good standing, correct? That's all that really matters, so.
New names here and there, which is good. Responders has some new people. All in favor, say if you're probably saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. EDA. A couple things, um, we'll be, uh, going through an EDA interview process to replace, uh, Marcia Criker, who was a resident of, like, he on the, uh, EDA board, so I'd like to make a motion that we, um, set a date of January fifteenth for interview for candidates. And to be approved, for the candidate to be approved at the January sixteenth council meeting. And I think we're looking at applications being taken up through January tenth, that Wednesday before. We'll try and get that posted. Excuse me, here a second. We can get it posted on our Facebook and website, uh, for interview candidates. Starting like, um, the twenty-seventh of December. If we allow for two weeks till the January the tenth. That'll be the Wednesday before the fifteenth.
How many candidates you have?
Two.
Pardon? How many candidates are interested?
We're looking for one person.
How many are?
It's open to the public.
Nobody's applied for it yet.
Or wants to apply. That we interview that evening on the Monday nights. It might be, uh, what's that?
What's the term on that position, that six?
Um, it's a good question. I don't remember what Marcia's term was.
Isn't there another term that's expiring? Is it Jan Johnson's term, like, this year or two?
Um, that's the next item. Well, no, he was, um, he was reappointed to the EDA for a six-year term at our EDA board meeting. He's still on the EDA, and he agreed to serve another term, so he's, uh, he's a six-year, uh, term.
That must be his, see what's open. In the one-year.
No.
What's that?
The one-year term.
His term ended in December. So.
But it's not the one that's open, no.
So we have four.
I did, I did realize that they needed to post that. I never got posted, did it?
Uh, requests for our EDA, we didn't have to do that.
Right, but what, it wasn't, it wasn't posted for requests, for.
For the EDA board, we had that. We had the flexibility to do that, I guess. That's what Rebecca Charles explained to us, so.
That's, that's in their bylaws. I think they just read up about requesting.
Um, it's in the bylaws, but that's typically how other EDAs go about reappointing.
This is Aronoco, this is another EDA. Has to be in specific.
We're working on the bylaws.
Well, as a chair.
We're using common.
They shouldn't be able to do that about bylaws.
You're right.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we, I guess, under the. I make a motion that we, I guess under the process, we made a motion, January. Twenty-seven, December to January ten, we'll be in the posting process. And. We've asked the candidates to come to the January fifteenth meeting at six-thirty. For the interviews. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions?
Because the interview taking be one fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
Yeah, well, I'll be, oh yeah, I'll be make the sixteenth council meeting, but I won't be available on the fifteenth.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, second probably saying aye.
Aye.
O's, that's approved. Last item is a, a grant, sponsorship grant that Rebecca Charles was able to work, she's our C D representative on the E D A board. So we'll bring this back at the, we need a resolution, and we'll bring that back at the January sixteenth meeting. Uh, it's a grant for five thousand dollars, which is gonna help us with the community engagement and planning study. Uh, this is a initiative that E D A has been set up that we will look towards having something in, I think it's April. March, April. And this is gonna be a community outreach. For gathering information. Excuse me, it's February twenty-seventh is the community engagement plan. And by the Orinoco E D A from six-thirty to eight P M. A survey will be mailed to six hundred and six homes in Orinoco. Now, this event is seeking input from the citizens regarding housing, parks, commercial, residential development. And this is paid for with a grant from Cooper Financial and C D contract. There's no city funding involved. But we do have to pass a resolution to account, money coming into the city coffers and moving out, so. That's a great, that's a stepping stone, one of the, one of the first things we're going to be doing for the E D A board, so. It's very, pretty very interesting, getting community engagement. And. Rebecca was also at the P and Z meeting, uh, because they're also looking for some community engagement.
They're gonna, yeah, combine the two and.
You'll be hearing more about that, there's gonna be a lot of publicity in the papers, website, Facebook. You'll be hearing more about that in January, early February. Next item is personnel. Yeah. First item.
Meeting this, Public Works, is here? No, oh, okay.
Have the parks and trails are over, or should it be Public Works?
Oh, we didn't have a.
I think they're the same thing.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, we're on. Anything you guys want me to talk about?
I'm sorry.
He had nothing, he had no agenda items, he's asking if they have any questions.
I responded back to you. Um, I think we'll wait till next year, unless she has some other.
Well, the one thing I was just looking at, Ryland, would be the, the remaining funds for. Your next resolution. The remaining funds from the American Rescue Act.
Oh, yes, we'll get you that.
That would be a good place to. Uh, fund that.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying, yes, okay, got it.
To be continued.
Yeah, okay. So, um, the first item is a, personnel, if they approve the virtual, virtuality unique contracts. And. Do you have any want to speak to this?
Yeah, so this is, this contract is, is just a, materials are as needed, not a, a monthly amount that we commit to. This is for making updates to our website, adding things to our website. So whenever we need them, we've had them in the past, so whenever we need them, we can just call. Based on the, on the contract, and the contract is basically the same contract as the previous one. And. It just gives us the ability to call and have them do things for us. We are not, we are not obligated to any set amount of hours or anything per month. It's just as we need updates to our website, or want minutes added, whatever we want done to our website, we can call.
Question. Would this be something that come from miscellaneous expenses, or where, where's this budgeted in there for, for next year's stuff?
I'm not sure. It would be.
So, yeah. I know Gold Rush had used Debbie in the past. And so, but she was updating our. Gold Rush website.
Okay.
And she did that for us, did a good job. Um, again, a little expensive towards the end because we had a lot of work, so we, we brought it in-house. Uh, the one thing with hiring Debbie is that she's not an employee to go into our documents website, or documents to pull those meeting notes out of the website, of our files. So. It'd be a little, so hiring her would be. Um, kind of a double duty for our clerk standpoint of our having to pull the files out, give them to her, and put them on the website when. One, the minutes before they're posted is approved, that'd be approved minutes, we don't put unapproved minutes on our website. It's the.
We do need to build Ryland for, um, planning and zoning, we put on, unapproved with the watermark.
That's, yeah, that's, that's another issue, but, but in this particular case. Debbie's not an employee, so she wouldn't be able to really to go in and get to those minutes to update the website. And Renee has been updating the website because we're starting, we're starting to come in, and now we, you'll see we have several. Minutes that will be approved tonight that can go on the website, so. With that, I don't think this is really, um. Either a good use of our funds, or, or the, just technically it can't really happen, or can't be used, she can't be going into our website in our same minutes.
Yeah, well, to that point, we've done it in the past, so really what you're saying, we, we were doing it illegally in the past, is what I'm hearing. I, I don't know that there's an issue.
Twenty twenty-one, and that was some issues where we were having trouble with the website, and she came in, she kind of helped guide us through the website reconstruction.
I think she did more than that, I think she actually, from what I understand, did work on our website. But it's either here and there, if, if you're saying that. Or if, what I'm hearing is. You're saying that we don't need. Their services. And, and this was just to help us out because of the minutes that we don't have on our website, I think it was since April. We have not had minutes, and this was to take the burden off Renee, to help us get to where we need to be, to ground zero. That's what this was about. So.
We're getting, I understand what you're saying, and then. The minutes are getting done, slow but sure, and when they're done, they'll be put on the website, but they have to be brought to the council for approval before they're. Being put on the website, so.
So I would ask the question. Any edits to our current website, who does that?
I do.
Renee does.
So you do web design?
I don't do the actual design, that's already been set up, I just add information as we need to.
So.
There's no doubt the website needs to be redone.
Right.
That's not, that's not the function of, of what Debbie would be doing.
Okay, I, I understood that that, that would be part of this. Because I, I heard in talking with Renee that we need some updates to our website. And that was part of doing this, knowing that this company did stuff for us before. So no matter what, I mean, if we don't have web designers, we're gonna need that function. At some point. You know, whether it's this company or another company, we, we still have to do it. We can't say that it's illegal, or otherwise we gotta hire a web designer.
Well, that's, that's a good point, because we do need to get our website, our website needs to be redone and redesigned. It could be more user-friendly, but with that, because we're always being approached by companies to redesign our website. And so part of the process will be going out and getting quotes to do our web, you know, looking for a package, just not giving a blank, somebody a blank check to go in and do something. So we'd be looking for packages with the bottom-line dollar figure. Is how I would see us re-updating our website.
Yep, and I get that, and, and I want to be very clear to everybody, this is not a blank check, this is saying, hey, we need you to do this, tell us how much it's gonna cost. I'm not in agreement with a blank check, so. I, I, I don't care where we go with it, we just need this function. But what I'm hearing is, that I have an issue with is, I don't care what company it is, we're not gonna hire a web designer, I would hold, to do this function. What I heard at the beginning of this is really, this company can't do it because they're not an employee and don't have the right access. So whoever we have do stuff on our website is gonna have to have the same access.
I think there's two separate things here, you've got the web design, and then you've got the content upload. The web design can be done by anybody, it's the content upload that nobody was gonna have access to except for the people that work in the office, because we're not just gonna open up our files and say here.
Right.
And we're not gonna spend time going, oh, well, you need this file, this file, this file, and send them all over, that takes more time, too. So I think you're looking at two separate things, you're looking at a design, and you're also looking at an upload. You can have somebody come in and redesign it, but the staff is still gonna have to upload all the files, one way or the other.
So what I'm hearing then is staff can do the file upload. Okay, so I would question, you know, why we didn't have that in the beginning, why are we sitting out there with minutes not. You know, minutes since April not out there, if the staff can do it, why it didn't happen, then. That, that was the idea behind doing this.
Well, are you, which minutes are you looking at? You're looking at council, none of them have been done, like, there is no minutes started, starting in May. She hadn't started anything, so I can't put minutes out if they're not started.
She did actually a few minutes.
And transcribed them.
Yeah, she took notes and stuff, but she never went through and actually did the minutes, which is why we haven't gotten anything posted, because we have no minutes done. That's why Rebecca is going through and helping us get those caught up as fast as we can.
So what, what did they approve, they approved, right? Like in the meeting tonight.
Yeah, those are done, but those are ones that Rebecca's been helping us with, the ones that are listed on the.
Ones that are in the back.
Those, those are complete.
Okay, so there's minutes that, of the meetings in the pack have been approved every month.
Isn't there a time limit on minutes that gotta be posted?
Yes, there's all kinds of rules, so, but you mean, one of the rules is you gotta approve them, you know?
We're working through those to liquidate to get them done.
I see, there's minutes in here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, never mind. I just, I was.
We are working on them, and the ones that we approved last month, I got up on the left side already.
These are the November ones we're proving tonight.
Right, exactly, that's all I'm saying.
Many people that haven't been finished, in my understanding.
Some early ones.
Yes, yes.
So, sir, any other comments or?
What is the direction from the council, did they, did they want us to go out and advertise for someone to do?
Well, we're not gonna put that in our budget.
Oh, it's not in your budget, okay.
So it may be, you know, that's something we have to consider for the twenty twenty-five budget, because we really didn't plan on spending any money for a web design, because they are fairly expensive. Go ahead and redesign the websites. We'll continue to work, everything updated, for all of our county, excuse me, committee meetings and council meetings, so. All right, so we'll move on. Next item is a, a posting of a part-time administrator assistant, repost.
The only comment that I have on that one is, um, we were gonna turn around and put the hourly rate that there was, that we did not have on the first one, thinking that we might get more people that would be able to apply at that. And the other would be, instead of just using, um, news and record that we use per, per, maybe go to Indeed. And to start doing that, that more people will be looking at that, and will reach more people that are in Rochester area, so that's what I would suggest.
So what is that, Ray?
We, we were looking at twenty-eight fifty.
Or part-time?
No, that was be fair, well, it's part-time going to full-time, the other part-time position that we have that we approved was for twenty-five dollars. But there were two, because we're going through a full-time, even though it's part-time right now to the end of the year, and then it's gonna be going full-time for the administrative assistant that there is, at the twenty-eight fifty. And then the additional part-time is at twenty-five.
So I thought we had to, when we change, when we go from a part-time to full-time, don't we have to repost for a full-time position?
Well, then maybe we might as well, uh, post for a full-time, doing it that way, because by the time we get it posted, it's gonna be full-time instead of part-time.
Yeah, and there's no way we're gonna have a part-time, or anybody hired now.
Between now and first of the year.
Year. No.
I, I don't think so, because you're posting it. So I know that, I know we've. I would like to think that when we hire our new city administrator, they would be instrumental in identifying or being part of, um. The full-time city administrator would be very helpful in identifying exactly what our needs are going forward. You know, do we need a full-time administrator, do we need a accountant, or whatever the case, or what other part-time, so. In my mind, I think a part-time administrator would be very helpful right now. Starting sometime as soon as, you know, mid-January. Because with the part-time in that twenty-two to twenty-five dollar range. That would give us an opportunity to help out staff.
We didn't have that for that range of twenty-two to twenty-five. Uh, the part-time that we had in there for, for that was at, at twenty-five, and then administrative was at, at twenty-eight fifty.
But I, I, I would be opposed to waiting.
I think we need somebody in right now to help Renee out, I mean, it's, it's important to have that.
But you're, you're posting for a full-time.
Well, there's two positions that we have available, that there is, there is a full-time position that we put down, which is at the twenty-eight fifty, and then we also have a part-time that there is at twenty-five. I see, so we have both the positions that are there. You know, it might be worthwhile to see which one gets filled first, and see if we get somebody that might be interested in a part-time. You know, in the meantime, to fill the position, and then that way it can help Renee out. Okay, and then if we wanted to hold up to the full-time, to be able to turn around and have, and, and, you know, the administrator or for surely, the help that needs to be done for that type of a person, because she knows more than we do.
So I got a question for Mike then, from you or your H R attorney, is it incorrect in my comment about. If you hire a person part-time and. Personnel wants to move into a full-time, we don't have to repost for that full-time position?
I'm not sure, to be honest. Probably depends on how you list the position, how you post it, begin with. You can, you can put the posting up for a straight-up, that. Yeah. Well, not. So, but if you wanna do that, I would consult. Posting. To make sure that.
It's posted for a full-time, make sure you're doing it right.
Which, which one I'm sure is legal? Which posting do you want to post?
Posted for a full-time.
Yeah, you can. Yeah, just post it for a full-time, we won't worry about moving someone in, we've got, we've already approved new positions, so. I would say we just wait.
Full-time one first.
Yeah.
Get it over with.
Yeah, right.
Well, getting over with it and finding out what we really need is my concern.
But I mean, if we hire, uh,
Have you talked to Renee to find out what the, the full-time assistant would do?
I'm sorry?
Have you talked to Renee about what the full-time assistant would do?
Yeah, well, Renee's been in the other interview that we had, so we've been involving Renee with what we've been doing up to this point in time.
Right.
So what do you want to do?
I mean, it was a long time ago, we approved, uh, full-time.
We approved the full-time and we approved the part-time, so both are gonna approve.
But we didn't post the wages, and we, that was with Mary, I guess, Mary was here.
And so we'll, we'll repost with the wages.
Right, and try to do Indeed as well as the paper, so that we can get more people to apply.
Yep, see which.
So what dates are you posting it from?
Positions are all in the budget, right?
Yeah, it already does, yeah.
So.
The very last Friday, December first.
Well, that was on the old one.
Right. So, I guess Renee, I would ask, how quickly can you get those posted? I don't wanna tell you, you have to have them posted, I'm, I'm sorry, Shirley.
No, that's all right, I, I really don't think that we could do justice to it until January first.
Right.
And I would suggest both Indeed, but also with the League of Minnesota Cities, that's free. You get lots of postings, they're free of charge. Um.
Free of charge?
Mm-hmm, doesn't cost anything, no.
The other thing too is, you have the stuff set up for the administrative assistant part-time, but we don't have anything written up for the full-time. So that's gonna take time.
For duties indeed.
So I, I, I'm with you Shirley, I would wait till after the first of the year, I would say. So Shirley, I, I'll, I'll look to you, what, what do you think would be a good date?
Do you want me to be real honest? I think, you know, you're, you're in the process, you have, uh, had Hunter hired to fill this position. I really think it would be good to wait until that position is filled, so that person has, can just take a quick look and say, you know, I could tell you right away, we need more help. But I'd hate to hire someone full-time that doesn't coordinate with what the, the next person come, coming in. You know, maybe that person's really good at doing city clerk work, and then again, maybe you're going to hire a full-time city administrator that doesn't do all the city clerk or deputy clerk things that, that the past one did, or planner. So I think it would be good to coordinate the two positions together, maybe, um, you know, and how long, you've got about, what, two months left? Mike will probably give you, the, Mike Humble will give us a report shortly, I'm sure in January. So you've skinned by this long, I mean, not that we're doing so well, because Renee is swamped and, you know, I just help out at the front desk and keep things moving. So it's not like I can go sit upstairs and just focus on administration. So I, that, that would be what I suggest, but if the city council really feels strongly about moving forward, I would change it then and go to the full-time position, and make that, you know, you're not going to have nothing for these individuals to do, because you're that busy and you're going to get busier. So it's really what you have in your budget and what the Personnel Committee thinks. And, um, you know, or if you hire part-time and say it's gonna become a full-time, then you might hire someone that doesn't want full-time. You know, so you should just go out for what you think, but I do think that it would be good to wait till that new person starts, but that's just my opinion.
If you're putting an ad out there, you don't have to hire nobody. You can find out if there's somebody available. I mean, because my administrator might be June or July when we get one, you know? No.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, but, uh, back to her remark, she said to turn in her time wherever she's working, and then it's gonna take a month or two here, I mean, we could be taking a can down the road a half a year.
Yeah.
You're hoping we ain't, but we very immediately could.
I think that, that the part-time then might make sense, that at least we'll have somebody in to help Renee and to fill in during that time. If we could do it that way and do it the part-time first, and then look at it, you know?
Yeah, I would say let's, let's post that, that part-time, so if we look at posting the part-time.
Okay, that's good.
Shirley, how, how soon do you think we could get that posted?
Um, I would say that we could get it, Renee is leaving now for vacation, and next week is the end of the week, so I'm going to work Tuesday and Wednesday, no, Wednes- Wednesday and Thursday, we're open next week. We're hoping that you'll close on Friday, you're only open four hours on Friday, it's a long weekend, holiday weekend. So I would say that by the first week in January, we could get something, you have your job description already uh, done for part-time, so I think that we could get it on all the sites, advertise it. Do you want it advertised in your local newspaper also?
We, we have the one that, that we use for our paper, which is near the record, but, um, but yeah, it doesn't go out far enough, that's where Indeed, I think, is what we need to do.
Indeed, LMC.
That's our.
Indeed and LMC.
You think that's doable?
So what I'm.
We aren't changing anything.
No, yeah, that's, yeah, we're not changing anything.
No, we'll just leave it as part-time, and we're doing it off of that.
With, with the idea that we, and it's, it's gonna depend where, um, the, the, the new hire in terms of timeline, where that's gonna be.
Sure.
Because if that's gonna be too far out, then we're gonna probably want to.
Okay, that's what I feel.
To take burden off, so then, we've already got the approval to do it, we'll just play it by ear based on the timeline of that, that, um, position being filled.
Okay, so then you'd wanna receive the resumes and the applications by what date? You give us the date.
Yeah, well, I think we need to post by the Friday, the fifth.
Okay.
I think of the Zabrona paper.
Okay.
We post it by, if you get it, then by, on the fourth, they can run it the tenth and the seventeenth, Wednesday, the Wednesday papers.
Yeah, we could, but I think Indeed's gonna give us more than what it's gonna be.
Well, yeah, the papers.
Yeah.
Yeah, so put in the paper, Indeed, LMC. So, um, have it posted by the fifth, and we'll take, what do we say, we'll take, uh, um, applications through, give it two weeks, you think?
At least.
At least, or should we give it till the twenty-sixth?
No, let's, let's try the nineteenth.
Indeed and League does not cost anything, so if you just, it's just that, when would you want, when would you want to, you know, set up interviews or so?
Well, I think we can start sending up interviews, you know, as soon as we start getting applications coming in.
So we would take applications until what?
Until the nineteenth, I think it's in two weeks.
Two weeks is nineteenth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nineteenth.
Fourteen days. And then we can look at, possibly start interviewing as, you know, if we get enough coming in, anyways.
Yeah, because I know we need to get some help in for Renee.
Right.
For the twenty. Yeah, so that's the most important thing.
And Shirley.
And Shirley.
Now, normally we do a wage range, are you doing that, or are you just posting the straight?
Well, on that one, for the part-time, we've got the approval for twenty-five, so you wanted to do twenty-two to twenty-five, or?
That's what I've been saying.
Yeah, to twenty-two to twenty-five.
That's a good range.
Yeah, say twenty-two to twenty-five, and then we'll set it based on experience.
And there are no benefits that we'd offer with this, right?
No, with the part-time.
I.
Other than?
There is some.
Just a holiday.
Holiday pay.
P E R A.
O P T E R.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what are the hours a week, twenty hours a week?
Well, we, the hours, we'll, we'll probably keep it at twenty, but it, I don't know if we wanna tie it at eleven to four, or if we wanna have it eight to one. You know, it, it might be whatever that person is comfortable with too.
Office hours or hours, they're willing to help us.
Yeah, it has to be there.
Between them, I would think, to, yeah, figure that out what they need.
All the details, we just talked through a central motion then.
Okay, um, good friendly motion for everything that we just brought in there, but, a motion to turn around and, and post for twenty-two to twenty-five at, uh, a news and record, and Indeed, and LMC, or part-time position as administrative assistant.
And your local newspaper, right?
Yeah. The Supermarket.
Yep. I second.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none of those in favor, just seeing probably saying aye. My kind of is a quick memo, um, in the packet regarding the, uh, Employee Sick and Safe Time Act, which is for full-time, part-time, see employees effective January one. There's a lot of information out of LMC, maybe a couple links. Q and A, but the one thing we wanna touch base tonight with the council is there's different options about how we go about accrual and carryover of time, so. Just very briefly, we know that employers have to work eighty hours a year to be eligible. And this also, after eighty hours, uh, for every thirty hours worked, we get a, um, for every thirty hours, you get one hour of sick, paid sick and safe time for every thirty hours worked, up to forty-eight hours of accrued E S S T a year.
At least forty-eight. One, one hour.
At least, yeah.
On a, on a.
No more than forty, yeah.
On a two thousand eighty-hour job, it's sixty-six or sixty-seven.
Sixty-nine hour.
Sixty-nine point three hours, I think it is.
Right, so, but you can't go in the forty-eight.
Sixty-nine.
The first year. You can carry over the second year, but not to receive paid.
So you want, so you wanna issue them forty-eight hours at the beginning of the year, so it's material, or?
Well, so that's one of the options, option one. Is the one we're looking at. So today we have PTO for the, for the full-time employees, so there's, that has sick time in it too, so E S S T complements it, that's a part of PTO time. It's called E S S T, and you have to keep track of the hours, staff has to keep track of, supervisors has to keep track of those hours on a payroll basis and be able to document.
Are we gonna replace the PTO thing with this?
They don't replace it, it's, it's a part of the PTO.
It, this is.
Well, there's, so what we do is, it won't affect budget, because it's, um, because we're, we're carrying your PTO in our budget right now, but it just accumulates and modified, identifies, um, those hours towards E S S T.
Right, but you want, you want, we'll take a person. But you don't, but you don't wanna, you don't wanna duplicate PTO and this, no, it's one or, one or the other, which one?
So basically, you're gonna, so if you get like a hundred and fifty hours right now of PTO, what you're gonna do is you're gonna separate out those forty-eight into a separate bucket, because it has to be labeled E S S T. And then you'll readjust your PTO, so you're still with that E S S T, you're only getting whatever the PTO is that we have currently.
So the PTO currently is even larger than this.
Correct, but we have to separate this out, because it's what's required.
It's just a mathematical equation to separate it.
It's a mathematical nightmare, yes.
And it's all it's gonna be too, is a headache. Well, you got a full-time person to figure that out?
But, almost. Other than, I'm sure the legislature can look at it, refine it for the budget.
There's.
This is what it is. Was that the question?
It's all right, you explain this one.
So option one is kind of the, is the easy way, but takes care of everything, the act is asking what to do for employees. Part-time, they've worked on, um, five hundred hours, so there's maybe six or seven hours of S E S T time, so small part of that part-time. Um, the other two options is more involved, the standpoint of, uh, there's some payouts, um, two and three. Option one is really the, you're hungry to hear the most about, about what employers are using. This also applies to fire department, that's something that Dan and, uh, needs to work with his responders, identify, um, how they accrue hours towards calls, maybe each fire call is two hours or one hour, whatever he decides. Uh, but it includes training, committee meetings, and, and fire calls. So they have a lot of work on their part to keep track of those volunteer hours too, so.
So this is basically any paid, paid personnel staff, to, you're saying?
Yeah.
Does that mean you're gonna call in, say how many meetings a year?
We gotta talk about that. I'm way over the eighty, okay, so, option two and option three, but I would think that, I guess I'd, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we apply option number one to our E S S T program for part-time and full-time s- city staff employees. And also be towards the fire department too, because we could all be going together to the city, so. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Office hours, um, it's okay to review value. Thanks, Bill.
Merry Christmas.
Office hours, on Friday the twenty-ninth, we'd like to close office from seven to eleven.
Second, I made, you made the motion.
I made a motion.
I'd second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll ask one thing, Shirley, just for our awareness, your contract?
Yes.
We need to talk about that at some point.
Okay, that's fine, we're good on it.
All right. Go ahead.
I'm unfinished business, we have a couple items. I want a discussion about the Waste Management Garbage Contract. But as I indicated earlier tonight, um, it has been signed and sent back to Waste Management.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I was under the impression that was being negotiated, and that it wasn't just going to happen, that it would come back to council to understand what was negotiated, and then approve it. And as the gentleman stated tonight, and I agree with that, we didn't, normally, when you, when you have bids like that, you see it on somewhat of a spreadsheet, so you can compare apples to apples. We didn't, we didn't have that. Sounded like you did, but we didn't have it. Not everything was in the packet, some things were in separate emails. And I, I do, I do have to agree, I don't think it was fair. Because it, there was, there was just one, and he, and he spoke here tonight, that that gave the bid, um, gave their bid based on the RFP that was sent out. It was two collections for recycle.
It was a recycle every week, is what it was.
Well, yeah, yeah, recycle every week, I guess I'm looking at two every two weeks, so, yeah. But the others came in with recycle every two weeks. And, and I remember asking this gentleman what it would be if you backed that extra recycle pickup out, because there's a lot in that. And he couldn't tell, and it was unfair to ask at that point. So it wasn't, we weren't comparing apples to apples, I don't believe that was really fair to have to do that without seeing one size, uh, size, you know, container sizes and everything. So, you know, I, I would have to agree, and the fact that it was negotiated, and, and I understood that it was gonna come back.
So Jim, can I address one issue?
Sure.
That I think the gentleman, and he, he had called me, and Mr. Harder had called me before that meeting and asked about this, and so there is a section of the Data Practices Act that makes those proposals not public data. They're not public, they're not open.
Okay.
And so that's why they weren't in the packet, but they were distributed to all the members by email. I don't know about the spread. I don't know about the spreadsheet.
You didn't get a spreadsheet?
I don't know about the spreadsheet, but the, and the spreadsheet wouldn't probably be non-public data, it wouldn't be. But, uh, the actual proposals are, it's in Minnesota statute thirteen point five nine one subdivision three B. It says data submitted by a business to a government entity in response to a request for proposal, which this is. Um, are private or non-public data until the time and date specified in the solicitation, that the proposals are due, at which time the name of the responder becomes public. So just the name, but those were discussed at the meeting. Then it says all other data in a responder's response to a request for proposal are private or non-public data until completion of the evaluation process. And it goes on to discuss what that is, so, I don't know, frankly, I don't think they asked me. And I, I think they might have not been included in the packet just because they were so voluminous.
So what?
But they were big, I think they were a lot of pages, I, I'm not sure that's the case, or if, if I had advised on this, but.
Think they were.
But they shouldn't have been in the packet, because you don't, you wouldn't wanna violate the Data Practices Act and, you know, that you could have waste management, Harders and the other company suing us, cause we, we published their proposal in violation of the law. So that's why they weren't in the packet, and I just wanna make that clear, Mr. Harder called me to tell him that. Explain this, I read this to him, and I thought he understood that at the time. And then related to your issue, I mean, Ryland and I discussed, so Ryland is the authorized signatory, and this comes up a lot, it came up with Shirley's contract too. On the November third meeting that you guys had where you approved Shirley, and there was miscommunication in my view about what was expected there. Was it expected that we were supposed to bring her contract back to the council for further approval? Or was it expected that the mayor and clerk were the authorized signatory, was it would just sign that contract? And I think it came up again now, so I think, you, you know, in the future, I did, you know, advise and encourage to be very specific with those motions. So like, you know, we are going to approve, and I think the council did approve waste management, I don't think there's any doubt about that, I think it was unanimous. So they selected the waste management company and authorized to negotiate a contract, but what does that really mean? Does that mean that it's gotta come back through further council approval or not? And so I just advised, um, Ryland that basically, you can see it either way, and then my last sentence is this, if you, you were surely wants further council action, you could have council take another vote, but I don't think it was legally required based on the motion that was made. Um, so that was my view of it, but again, it's opaque, and I think we've gotta be a little bit specific. Specific is good, and what a lot of cities do, this is going off, off, off-script of the waste management issue, but just generally what a lot of cities, I think are, is good to do is that the administrator or the clerk writes right in the packet what the motion they're requesting are. So they'll say something like, if council approves of the, of the proposal, whatever it might be, um, a motion to approve the proposal would be appropriate. And so then you read that in the packet, and the council person making the motion just says, I make a motion to approve the proposal. Date it out, you know, January, whatever, or I, I make a proposal, and, and they might say something in this case like this. Um, upon selection of the, the manag- the waste company, um, with, uh, you know, our staff recommends selection of waste management, if the council concurs with that, they should make a motion to approve the waste management contract, which was provided, and that's the other thing, they did provide the contract. Or, subject to further negotiations, you know, pending further council action, and it's that last pending further council action that I think we're kinda glossing over that a bit, and a lot of the motions that are made, just generally, and it's not just those two instances, I think it's a lot of instances, so. So I think that's what happened. I don't think it's illegal, it's not an illegal contract, I mean, once the mayor and clerk, just so you guys all know, once the mayor and clerk sign something, then it's, it's the contract with the seal of the city, then it's signed, then that's, it's a valid contract. So that's my.
Any contract?
Yeah, any contract, so then.
That's been approved by council.
But, well, no, I think once they sign it, it's, it's in the name of the city, whether the council appropriate, you know, correctly approved is what I'm talking about here. And I think that's the issue, you know, you get into, well, did the council approve that language? And in fact, and when I advised Ryland on this, I would, I said if they hadn't provided the proposed contract in their packet, their proposal, which was provided to all the council members according to Renee, I, although I didn't receive it, but she said she it was emailed out. You know, then I, I would take a different view of it, then I would say, well, similar to Shirley's contract, I would say, yeah, the con- it wasn't ever provided, you know, it wasn't, that actual contract wasn't voted on. And so I think you as council members would then have a right, uh, you know. But when procedural errors are made, you know, and I don't think this is a procedural error, but if you view it as a procedural error, which you might, he's already signed it at this point, so, um, that's my view, and then on the, they did ask me too about the proposals. You know, in the proposal document that Sonny had prepared, and I would just say that I didn't, the way Sonny had done this, I would have done it a little different. But I don't think it was, you know, legally deficient, but one of the things she wrote in there was, basically made this a proposal that we, we can award the contract based not solely on price. And that's written right in the proposal, what that means is you can take other factors into consideration, so, such as the size of the containers or whatever, whatever the deal is, but, um.
It was also pick up to whatever, you know, which was, was kind of a major part of what there was, if they recycle every week versus every other week.
Yeah, and I, and I think there, you know, the council voted to a, approve waste management, I mean, you know. Um, the other thing, Sonny, I'm not blaming anybody, but they did leave no time for this. So when you're gonna solicit for garbage contracts, you wanna leave a year to do that. I mean, cause, you know, to, to do the whole process, and this was like November, contracts expiring in January, so there was not a lot of time.
I, I know that, that the gentleman had tried numerous times to try to get, uh, get himself in to be able to be a part of this, and it even got to the point where he had to turn around and do a registered mail. To try to, this is the gentleman here, just to try to get into Sonny or to the administrator. And, and was never followed up on, so I mean, I think he did a great job trying to do it, and.
I don't, I talked to Mr. Harder for a while, I don't, wait, I'm not saying that, I, and I agree, the process left a little to be desired.
Yeah, and I mean, shouldn't have gotten to that point where you have to send a registered mail to be able to turn around to try to get into the, to the, you know, get on council.
Who knows, we don't know all of what happened, I mean, I wasn't involved, and you guys weren't involved, but I think the bottom line is, I don't view it as a deficient, legally deficient process. Um, could it have been a better process, yes, but I don't think it was legally, you know, it's not gonna invalidate this contract. You know, any deficiencies aren't gonna validate the contract, so, I just wanted to make sure you, you guys had that opinion, I, I, um, yeah, and Sonny didn't, you know, asked me about this, you know, beforehand, like when they posted it originally, cause, you know, I would have probably made a few amendments to the actual solicitation itself. But, again, you know, it said they're not, they're not judging on price alone.
No, we weren't saying that, yeah.
So you guys are just saying you didn't have the facts to really fairly judge it, or, or time to consider the facts maybe.
Yeah, one of the things that there was, that was, a factor for me when we did that, was the situation that, um, they were helping during Gold Rush, the wa- waste management had and picked up everything that there was. And if you looked at the, the R F P, all of the people that did it, had to turn around and give that free service, that there was the Gold Rush as well. And, and that really wasn't presented that well at all during that time, but it was taken into consideration for the people that turned around and bid on it, so.
Yeah. I'm not blaming anybody, just.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, okay.
It was on the R F P.
Yeah, it was a request for proposal.
Yeah, then everything said it had to be, that's what they gave, was that two, it was all pick up for free, okay, so.
Yeah, I mean, but in a request for proposal, you can, you don't have to, I mean, if, if, if the proposal that you've received doesn't exactly meet the criteria that you set, you could award it anyway. I mean, that's the, that's the difference between a proposal and a bid, that's the legal difference between those two things. So, and that's why I don't think it's legally deficient, but, you know, you know, part of it probably is, when we email that stuff out, I'm sure these proposals were long, I didn't read them, but.
Pretty short.
Yeah, three of them, so it's fifty pages, so that's a lot to read, you know. And that's kinda why I think starting the process earlier and giving a little more time would have been better, but, but you've already signed the contract, so, there's that too. So in the future, I think, you know, in terms of the con- the, the motions, we, we need to tighten those motions up a little bit, so that, cause then she's scratching her head like, well, what do I do with this, and, you know, and puts her in a spot where she didn't know, and like, Ryland's the authorized signatory, so. The way I wrote that advice, I was like, well, you know, if you were comfortable signing it, you can sign it, you know, the, this is the facts we have, it's not the facts. Um, you know. So, that's my view of it at least, a- and I don't think, I think it was absolutely dead right to not put those in the packet. I mean, I think you'd be violating the law to do that, so, um, I think we, we did that part absolutely correct.
And I think twenty twenty hindsight, then, you know, next time something like that comes, we have contract A, B, and C side by side, so we can actually see, compare apples to apples.
Well, and I think what, what you can do is when you do those solicitations, you can ask for the form of their proposal to include, include a summary sheet of charges, you know, a one to two-page summary sheet, so that, and most of them have something called an executive summary, I don't know if these ones did.
That was in the R F P, fill in the blanks.
Or we give a summary.
Summary in this format. Yeah, but I mean, if you, if you solicit and you say, you know, we want you to do a one to two-page summary, or you have fill in the blanks, then you just look at them. And did, I don't know if everybody did that or not, the form of their.
I know I passed out a spreadsheet that evening, cause everybody was looking at the spreadsheet too.
Yeah, we just didn't.
Talked through it with the different options too, that's.
Yeah, the thing that threw me off was the one that waste manag- that helped out with, with Gold Rush, you know, and, and I know that that was an important part of what there was, but I didn't realize that that was there, that everybody had to agree to do that same thing. Yeah, and so it was on there.
Agreed to it too.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, but, but, um, I just took that as, as being, we looked at as being a strong point, which, which is good for what needed to be done during, during that time, so.
So if you put these out for proposals again, it's only a three-year contract, I've negotiated garbage contracts before, I mean, they are quite involved. You know, to negotiate the exact terms you want, but it's only a three-year contract with a one-year notice, I think, I believe that's the case.
Maybe there's a certain time period to ask for a one-year extension.
Yeah, yeah, but you, okay, but you can, if you do another proposal, you know, it started a year ahead of time and that kinda thing. That would be my.
Go give it twelve months.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, and that, and that way you can ask, you know, you can do a lot, you can reject all the proposals and start over, you have, you have lots of options then.
A few lessons for you there, so. Um, an update, uh, Carl added an update on one fifteen Third Street Southwest. Spoke with Steve, Mary's representative.
The demolition application and building permit have been submitted, and they're back with Steve and Mary.
You speak.
They applied for a demolition application, and they applied for a building permit, both of them have been granted, and they're back with Steve and Mary, so.
So it's a plan they're going to build?
Nope, they're demolishing part of the building, and then the building permit is to seal that part up, back up.
Weren't they demolishing a garage too?
Yeah, yeah, there was more than one thing, but just part of the house and then one or two of the other structures. I would have to look back maybe a month.
I know, you really want the timeline, like, I mean, well, they, they.
Let me ask a question, did they actually demolish, have they done the demolition?
According to what Randy said that part of it was, I drove by today, but I couldn't see the back of the house, I can't tell you for sure.
I went up there, nothing's done. I was up there at noon today, before I came in and seen Shirley.
Yeah, so the next step, I mean, so we paused all this, just to give you a recap. The step was to get an administrative search warrant, to go in and have Randy inspected. We were about to do that, we were on the, like a week away from doing that, and then they applied for these permits, and then I advised, I think correctly, that you wouldn't wanna go, that getting a search warrant's a hassle, because you don't have a police department, and going to a big, we can get, we can do it, we've done it before, we can do it. But I didn't wanna do that, and then a month later, they demolish half, half of what's there, and then we have to get another search warrant to go re-inspect it. Plus, I view that Randy probably has the right. You know, when you get a building permit, you have to have it signed off on when you're completed, or demolition permits, I think he probably has the right to go there for that purpose, and I don't, I mean, I'm not sure he can do a full-on building inspection or not, but I think you have to wait until they do that, now, I think the point is, if they haven't demolished it, you know, when people apply for permits, we, we should follow up on those a bit, you know, and I, I don't know when, when it was granted, how much time they've had it, or what, I don't know the facts, but. So I wouldn't, I think it's, it's premature to do anything if they're gonna demolish half of what's there. Um, and Randy agreed with that, so like Randy basically told me, I met him, you know, we've talked a number of times about this, and he was saying, we have to go with what he says, and what he said was, well, after they do this demolition, it's very likely this will still be a hazardous property, even after the demolition. But he doesn't know that, he has to inspect after they complete their project, and I think they had submitted plans for the whole project, like what, where they were building the wall, I guess.
Anybody living in the property?
Hadn't met for a long time.
Don't you think we should send a, send them a timetable, that they gotta do something, I mean, just because they got a permit, I mean, if they had no time.
Yeah, I think you should call them and just ask.
Most permits are good for a year, aren't they?
I think you ought to send them, I think you ought to send them a certified letter, that they gotta do something.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, calling them ain't doing nothing, I mean, we've been at kicking the sand down the road for many years.
Yeah, so I think. Yeah, I mean, we can do that, um, I think step one would be, I mean, Shirley's in charge now, I take my, I, I take my, yeah, I take my direction from her. But I, I guess I would suggest to go do a visual inspection first, to make sure they haven't demolished it, I mean, how hard would it be to just drive over there?
You, you said you already looked today, so.
Twelve o'clock noon it was, and so, I'm sure they did knock it down this afternoon.
And then I would, you can send them a letter, or, I mean, they've been meeting with Sonny routinely, they had been consenting to a meeting, so. I would probably just call them and ask them, what's your plan, have you hired a company, what's the plan? And then if they don't, if they stone wire, then I might send them a letter, that's what I would advise, I guess, I mean, surely, it's up to Shirley, so.
Like, you know, we've been hearing this same story for three months, we're getting nowhere, give them time, give them time, give them time. I mean, it's time, the neighbors don't want it there, they got skunked, they got raccooned, they got, it's a health hazard. But nobody cares about it, I do.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna vote to just go full steam ahead, we can do that, you know, I, I guess that's not my choice, but, so.
Well, I think you ought to send them a certified letter, give them thirty days to perform or something.
One of the things that I've noted driving around town, there are several properties that look as bad or worse than that one. And so what I've learned in the past of, of, uh, cities that I've worked for before, you have to, you have to enforce all of your ordinances for everyone, you can't just pick one person and say, oh yeah, you've got junk here, clean it up, you, and I don't know where your enforcement is here. You know, most cities have a police department that enforces junk. Uh, but I don't care what street you drive by, everybody's got, is hoarding junk behind their buildings. I, I said to Renee, does the city not do cleanup, or do you not enforce your ordinances, or what's going on? I don't know that, I don't really do.
Question to ask you, name one building in our local as bad as that building, with the roof caving in.
The mains, on, right on Main Street, and it's got Al-Anon on the building, you go behind that building, it's just bad.
Roof caving in, the building caving in, building, the windows are knocked out, the roof's caving in, you know.
Oh, a lot, and you know, I was with a city where the state came out, and they searched for days, and, you know, whatever that zoning is, you have to enforce that for everyone. You have to enforce that for everybody. Otherwise, it's like you're, I get it. It's not, I thought the place looked pretty decent. Compared to some of the others because I didn't see a lot of junk. There was a a vehicle parked there. But I I don't go, I can't get onto the property to see that building is falling down in the back.
So the next step is to do an inspection, which is requiring a warrant because they didn't consent. So if you want to do a warrant, inspect it now, and then thirty days later. They fix it up. We can do another, a second double secret warrant and inspect it again. I don't care. I mean, that's your choice or their choice. But that is the next step. We're not sending them a letter telling them the property's hazardous because I don't know that. And even Randy told me that. He said, well. You know, it might be structurally sound and there might be deficiencies and it's a question of is there a nuisance? Is it a nuisance or is it a hazardous property?
Send them a letter that it tagged at Lloyd's. I said, well, they're gonna perform on their.
Sure.
But I guess we'll go for the warrant.
Well, we can do that. I mean, we can do a letter or, I mean, I would advise to just. I mean, they've been meeting with Sunny regularly. They haven't given you the answers you wanted, but they've been meeting with her. So if they, you know, Shirley meets with them for fifteen minutes at City Hall and they and they don't give her a straight answer. You know, and I what I advised the city before was to request the copy of the construction contract. Who is your contractor that's doing this work? I want to see the contract with the contractor. Cause then a and if they can't produce that. That'll tell me a lot.
There have been no communications with Sunny in the last sixty days.
Right, well, I agree. I mean, this is, we got.
Need to make sure, yeah. Before we start saying letters, I I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, we need to have policy to back that up.
I don't like, I mean, I don't, here's why I've never been a fan of, we can do what you want, but I've never been a fan of sending a letter. And then not following through with the letter. I'm not a fan of that. So like the first one we tore down in Ornaco all those years ago, I mean. Sandy, the three, three heads of city ago, four heads of city ago, I mean, she, I'm I'm not joking, she must have sent ten letters over five years. But they just sent letters and sent letters and then nothing, you know.
Red letters.
Yeah. I mean, if you're gonna send a letter. I mean, I I don't know if you want us to request what, like, give us a timetable or threaten that if you don't do it in X number of days. We're gonna take X action. We can, we can do that, but the next action is just to have Randy inspect. So. So I mean, it's a tough one, but these are all tough one. I mean, I'll do what you want. I mean, I think the council can vote to direct you to us to do it. Or you can put Shirley in charge and she can direct me to do whatever.
We made the motion that we have send a warrant.
But just keep in mind, everything we talk about besides them working through their permits is gonna cost us the taxpayers money.
Yeah.
To go through, have Mr. Flaherty do all the legal, and we could have a. Twenty thousand bill.
Their property do our worth. It won't cost us, he can put it on their property.
Yeah, well, you can. I mean, if it's a hazardous property. So if it's a nuisance enforcement action, we're talking something different there, and I don't, I don't know what rises to the level of, you know, we don't, I wouldn't. So the the people who are gonna be deciding that are the five people in the council. And so you're gonna be acting as judges, quasi judicial role. So in other words, there'll be evidence given to you about the condition of the property. And then you'll be voting as a judge to say this, this meets the. Hazardous law building definition or it doesn't. And so I would really hesitate for making conclusory statements now before you receive the evidence. That you think it's hazardous because they could appeal that. They could say, well, wait a minute. Before it was even inspected, the city council was already saying we gotta tear it down. They had prejudiced this. It'd be like a judge sentencing a guy to prison before hearing the evidence. We don't want that. So I would.
Said that. We ain't saying that. We're saying it's time that we do something instead of keep sitting there talking. It's costing us a lot of money. Let's go get a warrant and let.
All right.
Proceed.
That's a true.
What the hell is it? I that's my motion. I need a second.
Well, the only thing I'm I'm saying is is, but when you you said that you saw that today, then nothing had been done. I was there when he gave the last part of the money for the demolition, cause Renee was gone that day and and he paid the last part, cause he still owed. Money. So what was that about a month ago, Renee, when I did that?
You mean, he paid the part of me?
For, yeah, for the demolition.
He paid for the permits, yeah.
Yeah, so but that's when I took the last part of that money was was at that time. You're looking at at winter, can we still get demolition that's done or do they snap off? But I that's where I'm I'm looking at too.
Oh, I have no doubt this guy's gonna say, oh, we're doing it after the winter.
Yeah, but I I don't necessarily, I'm just, you know, trying to figure this out.
The building permits do have a clause on them, that say after a hundred and eighty days, they're null and void if there's no progressive.
But we don't want to wait. A hundred and eighty days on this, cause it's on that point.
No, I mean, I I.
Yeah.
Yeah, he has one.
I know, but I just said I don't want to wait a hundred and eighty days if we're not having any progress that's being done for this.
We can do the warrant, go inspect it, and get Randy's opinion, and then the council will next month if that's what you want to do. That'll be the next step.
Cause really, that's our, that's that's really our benchmark, right?
But just just understand, if we do that and then they demolish half of what's there, we're gonna have to do that again. Because that that opinion will not now no longer be valid. I mean, we'll have to re inspect it at the current condition. And that's why when they got those permits, I was kind of like, well. You know, do we want to spend that money and do that now or do you want to wait? But I also understand it is possible. That they're just stringing you along and actually paid. How much are the permit fees?
I don't.
I'll second. So. You want to do the warrant?
Yeah.
All right. We'll do the warrant.
And and so what is the motion? Authorize the city attorney?
Yeah, to. Apply for, uh, seek consent and or apply for a search warrant to search the property. For building nuisance and building code violations. Or. Yeah, I guess that's fine.
So who made that motion?
So I think Carl made the motion and Jim seconded.
I guess my opinion is I think that's, one, we don't have a, you know, we've given the permits. They said they paid for the permits, they're working on the permits, there's a time period given them. And all of a sudden, we're gonna do a workaround now to tell them to do the inspection and whatever's gonna come out of the inspection. So my concern is that the, what's that?
Jim's got a good point, though. Are they gonna wait six months?
Yeah, that's just, you can't, can't do that.
I think this is setting a baseline. It's it's not saying, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna shut you down. You're not gonna be able to build. It's going in to. Investigate to see, okay, what does it look like now? And if we have to do another investigation, then we have to, but. We're gonna be further ahead than waiting eighty day or a hundred and eighty days and have this same thing happen again.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta move ahead with this.
Well, maybe the thing to do since he's already taken out the building permit is to send him a letter saying that you were issued the building permit. You have a hundred and eighty days to start the project. If you don't start the, start the, start within that hundred and eighty days. Or to put forth action to remove it.
But Carl doesn't want to wait that long.
No, I don't think anybody wants to wait that.
I get that.
It's the guy's friend down in Spring Valley. So I mean. Well, the guy would go into places, friends that lives in Spring Valley, they're demolishing.
Huh? It'll Steve, I don't know.
Mary?
Yeah.
I know her, but.
So one of the things I do do too on the warrants is I'll send them a letter and say. This is the time period within which we're gonna do the. Cause I put that right in the warrant application for the judge to sign. We are seeking authorization to enter onto the property between the dates of this and this. The reason we do that. Is because you have to, Randy's gotta be available and it's very difficult to pinpoint an exact date. So when we do that, we necessarily contact them.
Randy is the inspector?
Yeah. Uh, so when we do that, that might light a fire. To say, you know, you know, we haven't seen anything done. We're gonna be there at, you know, January thirteenth through fifteenth or whatever we pick. To do the inspection, please be there with a key or we'll have to break the door. You know, that's what you basically say and then. You know, usually they're there and. And I still hope held out hope if we tell them that, that they'll just consent. Cause we're getting, I mean, you can get, I I I've reviewed the pictures and Randy and we both think the pictures are sufficient to get a warrant, like. There's no reason not to consent to just letting us go inspect it, especially when nobody lives there. That would make it easy, but I don't know. But I just want to warn you, just so we're clear, we'll be doing a second, we'll be doing this twice if they start doing. You know, they're property owners, they have the right to demolish their house if they wanted to demolish it, you know.
But I think you're, it's a matter of trying to get some action that there is, which is what we need to do. We need to have that up for a vote then, or?
Three more comments? Then all in favor, sing the public say aye.
Aye.
O's, aye. Prove? Next item is a resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty four. And this is a resolution to cover. Some of our expenditures using the American Rescue Plan money for the message boards. The electrical connection as well as a Allison low pressure grinder station sewer line installation. Leaving a balance of. Eight thousand one hundred and fifty nine dollars and forty six cents. So. And Kane. I want you to report in real quick.
Yeah.
Kane has one other item. I didn't bring email. Do you want to speak to that, what it was?
I got it.
That we can use American Rescue Plan funds for because it's water infrastructure type.
Well, that that's what came up in between this afternoon and tonight, Ryland, is. I'd like to purchase a valve exerciser. Pricing on that's forty two hundred and fifty dollars, about thirteen hundred dollars on sale today. Compared to a another vendor, so. On sale, now's the time to buy it with twenty twenty three funds. More water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, seems like the right time to get another valve exerciser. With that, like I said, what what brought me, what brought this up earlier was that there are leftover funds. Eight thousand one hundred and fifty bucks. That this would, this could be. Funds could cover the cost of this exerciser. Instead of taking it out of the the water utility fund or the sewer utility fund.
What was that exact number?
The total number for the valve exerciser from Corin Maine is four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And another quote I got from another vendor we use is. Fifty five ninety two. So, well, thirteen hundred dollars would be saving. Seemed like a good deal, seemed like a worthy expense and a worthy request. And like I said, I I found that this total for for the leftover rescue funds, there is one there. And we can use it on water infrastructure. If you look through the the packet there, you'll see we did a a mixer. We did the grinder installation for Ornaco Park, message boards. Other things there.
Well, I think it'd be good use use, good use of the funds.
For sure. Likewise, yeah, that's.
Oh, we could.
And maybe, Ryland, maybe you want to share with everyone, you know, we, my initial thought was to take it out of the water utility. Thinking that the water utility has some money, has income, right? Monthly income. We generate funds and it's it should be self sustaining, surely, right? So I was thinking, hey, this is a a good use of, this is where it should come from.
What's this thing actually do, Kane?
It exercises the hydrants and the valves. So a lot of those valves you see up in the street and the hydrants, it's it's this repetitive motion. So this exerciser, battery operated, kind of stand back, so it's a, it's real nice on the body. So you add up all the valves and you add up all the hydrants and and exercising them twice a year. Now we have the treatment facility. And all the sewer infrastructure additionally. So we've got one right now. It works great. But, you know, that's only one person, you know, it'd be nice to say, hey, you know, let's split up and two people conquer that task instead of one.
So they could use for flushing. Isating hydrants.
Absolutely, yep. And it's it's really torquey, so you can, you can really give those valves a a good crunch and you can. Exercise them, lube them, it it really helps out. It's a, it's a really nice tool. I've got some documents here if anyone wants to see it.
So I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty four. To include the valve exerciser for four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. I will update the resolution with. After the vote.
Is there a second?
So really, this is twenty four, though, isn't it?
That's thirty.
It says thirty four on here, but twenty four.
Editorial.
So it's thirty four?
Thirty four at the top, yes.
Okay.
So is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? So the one thing left, incorrect if I'm wrong, Kane, is that. You still have to connect the sewer from the grinder station to the restroom yet.
Correct, yep.
So there could be another. Couple thousand dollar bill left out of four thousand left.
And you know, I I think we've got a few favors to ask of the contractors locally, so I think we're, I think we'll be able to get that done.
Any other comments? As for the vote?
Me, Eric.
Aye.
Um, Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Pendergrass?
Aye.
Counselor Richards?
Aye.
And Counselor Lark Cross.
Aye.
It's getting late.
Thanks, everyone.
Last resolution before the consent is resolution twenty twenty three thirty five. And this. Our scene, it's a designating Ornaco City Hall as a annual polling place for the upcoming general election in November. Uh, we may want to just update, review that twenty twenty three in the middle, twenty twenty four.
That's one that was distributed at the beginning of the meeting?
I make a motion, we approve this resolution.
Okay.
Any other comments? Singing that, we'll do the voice vote.
All right, and that's resolution for polling, correct?
Yes, thirty five.
Mayor? Okay, are you voting, Mayor?
Yeah, aye.
Oh, okay. And Counselor Lark Cross?
Aye.
And Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Richards?
Aye.
Counselor Pendergrass? That resolution?
Last item on the consent agenda?
Well, I had one question too. Do we need to do anything with you, Shirley, or?
Well, we don't have that on the agenda. I don't, I don't have any of that information here. I guess I thought it was gonna be all the contract.
Oh, yeah, we, that should have been.
Yeah, cause I would, I'd like to make, well, we can't make a motion, can we, without having it on there?
I don't think so.
And you can, you can, but just be specific. So what came up, like, our firm drafted our version of the contract. Shirley provided a version of the contract and the prior motion wasn't clear as to which one you wanted us to do. And I, we view it as you you instructed us to work with her to correct it. We've done that. There was miscommunication with Jim, but we got her the contract eventually. She for a couple of weeks now or a week and. So. I asked, so I asked Nico about this and he said it's very common for administrators to start working without a contract. And that's not, I mean, you have to pay her for her time, but if we approve the contract after the fact, that's not. That's not a problem according to him, so. But I think you do need a contract. I mean, I think Shirley, I've talked to Shirley, just don't want to put her in her mouth, but she wants a contract, some contract. And I think that's reasonable, so. You know, but you do you do a special meeting in January? You know, but you, do you do a special meeting in January for the appointments or whatever, like you were saying, or is that not?
Yeah, I was looking at the calendar and with our meeting on the sixteenth.
That's the regular meeting?
That's the, that's the menu, the monthly meetings, sixteenth, so I think we'll probably just wait till it.
Okay, so.
Comes up pretty quick, so.
Yeah, so probably she might have to wait till then, or you can do a special meeting if we get it negotiated the first week of January or second week of January, whatever.
If we need a special meeting, we can do a thirty-minute meeting.
Well, I don't, I mean, if it was just that issue, I think she could, you could just, I don't think it would be a thirty-minute meeting. I think it would be a five-minute meeting. Yeah, two-minute meeting, so.
Yeah, so with that, you've seen it, I, I know it went from three to thirteen.
And that's a little scary, as I, and I didn't have a chance to have my attorney look at it, and so I really, you know, um, I'm just here for such a short time, I, you know, I assured all of you, I'm not a signer on anything. I'm not going to make any decisions without counsel approval or the city attorney. So that's why we've just kind of gone along and I'm working, yes, on your computer, but really under everybody's direction, I'm not doing anything or going into any files or looking at anything, so, um, you know, can it wait? Yeah, it can wait, and I was going to call, um, Mike Campbell and see where he's at. You know, maybe he has some interested candidates that we can just take another month and then I'll be gone and you'll have some.
But I want to make a comment too, that, that if that contract had worked for so many cities in the state of Minnesota, and it's, that has not been an issue, we've got an extra policy for a couple million dollars that you're carrying on top of that that goes along with it, you know, why does it have to be that difficult that we just can go along with her contract and then vote on it and say, you know, that we'll take that one?
When we sent it to you, so there's reasons, there's all kinds of reasons why they had those provisions on this continent in that contract. The bottom line is, i- in a nutshell, our labor attorneys were saying you shouldn't not do an employment contract because you'd be misclassifying her as a contractor, not an employee. But if you're gonna do that, so the contract we drafted is still a contractor contract because that was the direction of the council at the last meeting. So it has provisions that are beneficial to the city. If you just want to do her contract, you can do that, I mean, you get, we already advised on it, we sent the, we sent the advice as to why we weren't advising that. If you want to go, you know, it won't hurt my feelings if you don't take our advice, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the, the three-page contract with what we've got with, with, uh, extra two million dollar rider that we're, we're taking and, and accept, you know, Shirley as, as what there is as an interim.
I'll second.
So, again, it wasn't on the agenda. Not sure we can really accept that motion, I mean, it's, I understand, but it's not on the, it's not on the agenda.
I mean, we.
You guys always look at me.
I think talking about wasting money, I think we're wasting a lot of money on a thirteen-page contract for a lady who's going to be here maybe a month. Two million dollar liability. I'd get soon cut our losses.
That's just.
So with the council's approval, we'll, I will allow this to be added to the agenda.
Thank you.
Who's second then? Any other comments? Singing that, all in favor, second, I'll be saying aye. O's? It's approved? Consent agenda?
Oh, we got the next one first here.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Do you share your responsibility under D or C? Share, share a little something with everybody that.
Well, did you vote on the consent agenda? Oh, oh, discretionary, or, uh? Yes, thank you.
Their responsibilities to the public when we, when we write checks. Not very happy that, uh, we wrote a check to, uh, Sonny after we were asked to not write that right away until the until the, the number was determined was the check was supposed to be, the amount was supposed to be on the check. The check was written without without knowing what the number was act- that the actual number was. And I just think that's not responsible. And do you want I can read this to you, or you can read it yourself? But I think with what, with, with checks being written like that without permission, or with, or without with being requested to not write them, I make a motion to remove Ryland from writing checks, signing checks for the city.
Does her second?
I'll second it. I didn't approve of that.
Well, just make sure I'm clear. Are you referring to the text?
I'm referring to you writing the ten thousand dollar check to Sonny after you were asked to wait until we knew what the numbers were. You signed the check before we knew what the numbers were. At our last meeting, nobody knew what the num- nobody knew what the numbers were at the last meeting, till Renee went and brought in the time chief to show the hours.
And we still really.
I've not got a detail. What, haven't got a detail on it?
Right, we still don't have detail that was asked for. So I, I'm still going to request that detail, but.
Can't be doing that when we're being asked to not do it.
So, I, just to clarify, my response back to the, the one response I sent back to Jim in that string of text, it said approximately ten thousand. It didn't say exactly ten thousand, there was a, there was a sign saying approximately ten thousand, it's just a ballpark figure.
What was the, uh, check signed? Made up for. What was the amount on the check? You signed it, you should be, you should remember.
He didn't sign it, it was an automatic posit, that's how payrolls are done. Or no, wait, it was an auto, no, wait. I have to look back, I don't remember now.
It was approved. I know the PTO was two hundred and twenty-one hours. I think that's correct, sorry, that's the P, that's what you.
Yeah, around two hundred and twenty-one, two twenty-two, I don't remember.
Was it made up for two hundred and twenty-one hours pay, or was it made up for ten thousand dollars?
It was however many hours times her wage.
And her wage was the same, there is a something mentioned that she got the six to half percent, which she did not. Her whole pay was forty-five sixty-seven the whole year, so she didn't receive COLA, she didn't receive cost of living or performance.
And just to be clear, Ryland, there's a text, you said ten thousand.
Yeah, during that time.
Yep, this is yours, and I said I responded.
That was a sign indicating ten thou- approximately ten thousand.
Why would you make that effective?
I guess I didn't take it that way.
It wasn't a minus ten thousand.
You've already.
It was an approximate ten thousand.
I guess, I would, I didn't see that, that sign. I see that as ten thousand.
Well, that's. Was Ryland the only signatory officer?
So is there a policy that sets the signatory, so what's the, this gets into, I'm going to push you a little bit on specific motions. Remove Ryland as a signatory, so what does that mean? Does that mean we're amending policy what?
Pay him off signing for the bank, signing payroll.
Is that, is that in ordinance, is it a policy, or are we amending some document?
It'd be a bank policy, I'm not sure.
I mean, you're an authorized signatory, the mayor and clerk for official documents. And it's never come up, I don't know. I don't know if you can do that or not, but yeah, I, I guess I can't say.
I'm sure it'll take that long.
We had a motion and we've got a second, okay, so I just gotta go, we got discussion and I just gotta go for a vote.
So there's us, I'd like to make another comment before we do that, so part of the discussion that we had was working with the, um, Mike's HR person too. So there is a comment, I think I have it here in front of me, of course, but the comment was, it was either, um, something to the fact that either I could sign it or do you remember how that went?
There was also.
There was an option, and then it came back.
To approve it, it could do, she said it could either go to the personnel policy, the personnel committee or the mayor to approve.
And, and we turned around within the personnel committee within that hour, we were given an hour and twelve minutes to decide what we were going to be doing, and so we had things going back and forth, and we said, no, hold off till we can turn around and, and prove that that was the exact number. Not saying we weren't going to do it, but that was the exact number. The thing that you came back with, Mike, was with your, your people at the work, was a matter of, is it good standing, is she in good standing, or is she not in good standing, and
That's a decision for the mayor or the personnel committees.
Right, well, and, and it was, we, we weren't given that opportunity to be able to address that, which is what we wanted, we had an hour and twelve minutes, because we were, no, we were given.
I'm not quarreling with you, all I'm saying is, if you take, if the mayor's not allowed to sign something, are we going to be able to pay the bills? Like, what's the law?
Well, I can, I, I can, you know, I can sign, I'm, I'm a signatory of the resident checks right now, so.
Oh, okay. Yeah, as long as you're good, I mean, I don't, I don't really care, I'm just logistically. Well, the two issues are, can you take the mayor off, if there's a statute, can, can the local government take him off as an authorized signatory? Certainly you can't for contracts. This isn't a contract necessarily, it's a check, so I guess I don't know, not, not recent, I'll just say this. I wasn't given any prior notice to research this issue, and I don't know the answer, so do it at your own risk, I guess. Fair enough?
Okay, I have one concern. Because staff is, um, because Renee is going on vacation.
Right, that's where I'm getting at, practical issues, I don't know.
Checks that have been authorized to be signed today in payment of claims.
Right.
Subject to that have been filled out and signed by both the city clerk and the mayor. So are, are you saying if they adopt this tonight, that, that it cancels out, that he can't sign tonight? Make it effective way?
He's already signed it.
Yeah, yeah, they're just saying moving forward, I think you just amended to say notwithstanding what's in the packet tonight or something. Yeah, I'll, I can look at this after the fact, but I, you know, as long as somebody can make payments. You know, it's like there's somebody to write checks legally for the city, and I just don't know the answer to that.
Really, I'm, I'm already on, I'm a signatory, and I've, I've already done that in the pack.
We can make it January one, you know, that way it gives time for everybody to.
But you're amending your motion to say that?
No, no, you, what, that's what I was trying to get Jim to, Jim's got it, you made the motion.
No, this.
Oh, okay, sorry, hold it.
I'll amend the motion to make it January one. And so December thirty-first, you should make it.
Is there a second to that amendment?
And I'll, I'll second the amendment, amended motion.
Any other comments? So with Mike, you'll so you vote on the motion, but you're still going to look at it, or is that?
If you want me to look at it, I mean, if, I don't have to. Yeah, I would just vote, oh, yeah, okay, just do the vote, and then if you want to drag him, do something, I can.
All in favor of the amendment, if you're going to say aye.
Aye.
O's, ayes, faves, abstain? Mike's the motion?
Paul, where is this from? American Juris Prudence. Book of American Juris Prudence. Sixty-three C.
Now we're voting on the motion?
Yeah, I, um. I feel like I didn't do anything wrong. Whether the personnel committee would have signed it. In my opinion, as an employee, or a past employee, is, is what we have done with all of our people that have been terminated. Uh, we paid the PTO, we've set a precedent with the previous, um, person that, uh, was terminated, and that was the same case with the PTO time, so. Uh, unless there's some other ulterior motive for the personnel committee to consider not her not giving her the PTO time, which I don't know if you're going to do that or not. Uh, we had the option from the attorney, and we, uh, I took that option as the mayor signature to go ahead and make that sign, so I thought it was very legit, very proper. Um, and the precedent been set, when the first, Rebecca was terminated several years ago. So I didn't feel like there was anything wrong with what I was doing, but, um, I guess that's eyes of the beholder there, to say you think I did something wrong, but um, I felt like I was doing what I've, my job required, and that's what I did.
So I'm just looking at this, so some other city did an authorization by resolution. Except, but they did a resolution confirming city check authorizing and signing policy. So I don't know, I mean, I have not researched this before, but apparently it has been addressed by other, by other cities. And, and that is Mendota Heights, and they said the mayor, treasurer, administrator, clerk, and finance officer be placed on file with the Durodon County Bank. So you might want to, it's almost like an official designation, the way they did this, it's probably legal, to be honest with you, because it's not a contract, I mean, it's something that's been approved by the council. I mean, all your warrants or bills go on the agenda. So it's probably, you just get to decide who signs.
One comment I'll make, Ryland, on what you had said. And I don't have it in front of me. I, I would, I would dispute what you mentioned in terms of the attorney, because I, I, I don't think it was worded that, that you absolutely could. It was something in respect to the, the mayor or personnel committee, that it was a little bit different verbiage. And and it was evident when I asked Renee, because what we had gotten was that the attorneys are suggesting that we do it. And it was very evident in that meeting that Mike didn't know. And and to be very clear, you had stated in that meeting that you didn't think that she left on bad terms. The majority of the council being that she was terminated is basically saying she left on bad terms, and what you said in that meeting was you thought she, you and Dana thought she left on good terms, and you thought you were warranted, or those weren't your exact words, but basically you're warranted to do that, and that's when I had stated that's not the way it works, and it's not. And in the text message, it does say ten thousand dollars. And all we wanted, and, and I stated in that meeting, I had the timeline, because I called Renee. And it was very clear to Renee that it does not happen until we have a chance to review it, not saying we weren't gonna do it, that we have a chance to review it, understand when Sonny took PTO, how much was paid out, how much is accrued. I did get a document, everything is redacted, but Sonny's, and I do want the full document, because I am chair of the personnel committee, I wanna see them all.
There is no chair.
Pardon?
There is no chair, we have two-person pe, personnel. You can call yourself a chair, but there is no chair.
There is a chair, it was called chair when Lori was here. It was.
Yeah.
I'd never heard that. Anyway, go ahead and throw a comment.
I mean, you, you can't make those changes, just, you know, derogatory, it's, it's very derogatory, anyway, um.
So what are you requiring of staff today? What, what is your, what are you asking?
I guess what, what I, I'm just pointing, I'm just having my rebuttal to what Ryland is saying.
I'm sorry.
Is, cuz my opinion versus Ryland's opinion, and it was stated at the last council meeting. Ryland thinks that Sonny left on good terms, the council, based on the vote and termination, she didn't. We weren't saying, I wasn't saying, and I don't think Jim was, that we weren't going to pay her, we just wanted to be able to validate and verify. That was it. We weren't given that chance to do it. And then bring it to council, to say, okay, this is, it's gonna be paid. We weren't given that chance, and we have that right. And outs, outside of council, I don't think that authority is there to just sign based on something that the council voted on. And, and to say, okay, that person didn't leave on bad terms, cuz I don't think they did, you know? It was asked, it was documented, there was a phone call made, and, and honestly, I put fault on Renee for this as well. You know, because that phone call was made. Said, it's not that we're not gonna do it. I just want the information so I can validate and verify, I did state right from the start, yes.
Let's say that's out of order to talk about our city clerk like that.
How am I talking about her?
You're berating her.
I am not. Am I?
No.
You just degraded us tonight than Ryland, in front of the entire city.
But you can't talk to city staff like that.
I'm not talking bad about her. Does anybody think I'm talking bad about her?
Just letting the facts be known.
Not at all, you were talking bad about us earlier tonight. We didn't say anything. So anyway, that's, that's my point.
In defense of staff, there are lots of times that, um, you know, I think what, what happened here is difficult for staff, I mean, I don't know, um, even now, when I work with Renee, I'll say, do you think we should be doing that, and she said, don't ask me, cuz I'm not sure. You know, and that, that, uh, the fact that five people don't support all of staff, did she get, did she get slighted because she works here and worked with Sonny and had a decent relationship? I'm not sure, but it's not like, um, you know, we should single staff out, because if she was asked to write the check, she did what she was.
Right, and I think she was pressured, honestly.
She was asked to wait.
Yeah, I think Renee was put in a bad spot.
Yeah.
She was.
She was, and I'm, I'm the only fault I'm, I was pointing out is Renee's the second signatory, you could say, hey, you know, Jim's email said this. Hasn't had a chance to do that yet. That's all.
Okay. Okay, but we're clear here that, that, okay, he's not, he's not taken off until when, did you say?
December thirty-first.
Oh, December thirty-first, okay. But, but he still is allowed to sign contracts and stuff, that's.
Just the bank.
Just not the bank. Sorry, thank you.
Any other comments? Call for the vote?
Already called it.
We already called the vote.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Ryland abstains.
I do have one question here before the consent agenda.
Did Barry do the consent agenda?
No.
That comes last.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay, we get back to consent agenda, we had Jim Phillips motion, Jim Richard to second the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye?
I asked the question before, the you know, I just would like to know you're talking about a special meeting, I'm in town here until the seventh of January. I'm flying back to Arizona, I'm gonna be in Mexico the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth. I'm flying back up here the morning of the sixteenth to come to the council meeting, and I'm flying back home the seventeenth, to Arizona. So, just, so I, I just want everybody to know my schedule. But I will be at the council meeting. And if we're gonna have a special meeting, I'll likely come if it's before January seventh.
The consent agenda.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
O's? The motion being adjourned.
Second.
Favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So we, we say it all night? You're all laughing every.